Okay, well, welcome everybody. This is the Beverly School Committee, Committee of the Whole. Today is Wednesday, September 16th. We're meeting in a hybrid model tonight using our remote-meeting application that's provided at no cost to the district, as well as using BevCam to broadcast us tonight, which allows for public access during the open portions of this meeting. This is allowed under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, according to the Governor's March 12, 2020 Order entitled "Order Suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law." This order specifically suspends the need for a quorum and the chair to be physically present, although we do have quorum and chair present tonight, but it also asks us to use technical methods to allow safe public access. To be clear, tonight is a Committee of the Whole, and there is no opportunity to address the body during our meeting, and therefore I encourage all of you to use the BevCam streaming options available on bevcam.org or on their YouTube government channel. We are also trying out a captioning tool, and I don't know if that's up and running.
It's on the monitor screen.
It is? Okay, perfect. So, we're trying to use this captioning tool while a longer-term solution is being procured. Please bear with us as we kick the tires on this third-party tool. Joining us tonight are members of the school committee, as well as district administrators. I'm going to do a roll call quickly so you know who is joining us remotely as well. Please remember that any audio or video that you supply does become part of this public meeting, so use your mute functionality to prevent background noises. The chair will call for you to unmute if you want to be recognized. Now, I'll conduct a roll call. We have Mayor Cahill.
Yes.
Kimberly Quelo.
Yes.
Absent this evening, Kelly Ferretti. John Mulady is joining us remotely.
Yes.
We have Karen Robinson.
Yes.
Lorraine Devisnick.
Yes.
And I am Rachel Abel. We also are joined by Dr. Sue Cherocheck.
Yes.
Dr. Dorothy Flaherty.
Yes.
And Ms. Jean Sherberry.
Yes.
On the line with us, we have Ms. Bethany Splansky.
Yes.
Mr. John Harmon.
Yes.
And our recording secretary this evening is Laura Harrison.
Yes.
Okay, we can hear and see all of you. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Then, we're going to go briefly into an executive session, and then we'll come back out to open session to approve a memorandum of agreement. So, Mayor Cahill, would you lead us in the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And with that, the chair would like to move to convene an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for the following purpose: Purpose 3, to discuss strategy with respect to and in preparation for collective bargaining with the Teachers' Unit A, because an open discussion may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee, and then to return to open session. Second. Thank you. And this will require a roll call vote. Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Kimberly Quelo?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
John Mulady?
Yes.
Lorraine Devisnick?
Yes.
And Rachel Abel?
Yes.
Six to zero, we have one absent. Okay. Thank you so much, BevCam, for just holding the line. We'll be back with you shortly.
Fantastic. Thank you. Welcome, everybody, to the Beverly School Committee FNF Subcommittee Meeting. Today is Wednesday, September 16, 2020. We are meeting in a hybrid model today using a remote-meeting application provided to us at no cost. BEVCAM is broadcasting us tonight, allowing the public access to the open portions of the meeting. This is allowed under the Governor's March 12, 2020 Order entitled "Order Suspending Certain Provisions of the OML-MGL 30A Section 20." This order specifically suspends the need for a quorum and the Chair to be physically present, although I am present and we do have a quorum, and asks our body to use technical methods to allow safe public access, safe public to access. To be clear, tonight is FNF, and there's no agenda item for addressing the body during our meeting. We would encourage viewers to utilize BEVCAM's streaming options this evening. We are also trying a captioning tool. While a longer-term better solution is created citywide, please bear with us while we test out this third-party captioning tool, recognizing it is being used on a trial basis. So if you're watching either in the room or from home, you should see the closed captions on the bottom of the shared screen. Joining us today, we have all of our school committee members on the Subcommittee in person. We do have one member of our public on the committee in a hybrid situation at home. And we have one or two city councilors joining us remotely, as well as Commissioner of Public Services, Mike Collins, and our Recording Secretary, Laura Harrison. Just looking to see if anybody else is in the meeting. Councilor Julie Flowers will be in as soon as I admit her into the room. I will ask everyone's patience this evening as I attempt to work the Zoom. There's Ms. Flowers. As I attempt to work the Zoom portions of this meeting, as well as run the meeting as the Chair. Okay, so the first thing I'm going to do is I'm going to share my screen, and we are going to look at our agenda. And thank you, everybody, for joining us. Thank you, especially my members of the public, for agreeing to serve, especially in our crazy times. Okay, so here's our agenda. The font's a little small for those of you in the room. I think you all got your packets. I can make the font bigger if you really need me to. Usually, we start, as Mr. Manzo pointed out, approving meeting minutes from a previous meeting. In fact, our previous meeting was what we call stacked. It was a FNF and then a committee of the whole. And so the body of the whole has already approved that combination set of meeting minutes. So there are no meeting minutes this evening with which for us to begin. So we'll jump right into our Buildings and Grounds Report. And as is our kind of format for a while now, is that we received that report, and the committee members had it a few days in advance. And so I will ask if any committee members, easy for me to say, and I'll try to look on Zoom. If you have a question, please physically raise your hand. Does anybody have any questions for either Jean or the Commissioner of Public Works relative to the B&amp;G report? Mr. Manzo?
I just, Jean probably can't handle this as easy as anyone or Dr. Trochek. What happened with all the extra furniture? Did you guys find places to store it?
So we purchased some storage trailers that were placed on each of the middle, elementary schools, and McEwen, and the high school. I do not believe we put any on the middle school. All of the excess materials have been put in their storage for safekeeping, so we don't lose our valuable items.
I'm just curious. Thank you.
Okay, there we go. All right. Any of my members who are attending remotely, my city councilors or my committee member? No more questions? All right. Mr. Collins, you got off so easy on that one, but we know we're going to grill you later, okay?
Well, he's gonna, Mr. Collins is gonna stay on for, during my, my next item, which is the Finance and Operations Update. There's a facilities portion that he's going to stay online for.
That's what I mean. We're ready to grill him. Are you sharing to do that, Jean?
I am gonna try.
Okay. I'm gonna stop sharing, and then Jean's gonna share. Beautiful. Looks like you're a pro.
Yeah, except I don't know how to go to the next page. Okay. So I'm giving a Finance and Facilities Update. And like I said, I don't know how to get to the next page. Oops. Too fast. Okay, now I have it in two places. Okay, so the Administration's Updates is going to be talking about the COVID-19 funding, facilities, and the FY21 budget update. Whoops. So the first thing I wanted to talk about, see, I'm looking at my paper here. The first thing we're going to talk about is that they, what the COVID funding, financial funding that we have during this time. So the city has received a CARES funding and FEMA funding, and they have shared a portion of that to go to the, for the schools. So the first part is the FEMA funding, and that's estimated at $281,100. I've put in here the fund number in Munis, for those that utilize Munis with me, that they know which fund numbers I'm talking about. The first item is the PP&amp;E in cleaning sanitization. That is for safe schools and the work environment, and maintenance equipment, sanitization, and district disinfecting of the school buildings. The FEMA picks up 75% of the cost of those items, and then the additional 25% goes under the CARES funding, which is fund number 20371 in Munis. And we're estimating $1,101,930 coming out of the CARES funding. So therefore, what we were able to purchase out of there is going to be the technology iPads for grades three and five students, teacher laptops so that they can do the remote learning, other technology, which is going to include central office laptops, so if we need to go remote again, we have the capabilities, hotspots for the students, and elementary displays for the remote learning, and software licenses. We keep track of that funding and balance with the city on that funding.
Jean, do you want to take questions as you go on these slides, or you want to get through them and then have people ask you to go back to a specific slide?
Do the grants and then questions. How's that? Then we have two grants that I'm talking about. And the first one is the ESSER grant, which is Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief. That's grant, that comes from the Department of Education, and that's grant number 113. And that was for $555,939. I just wanted to make a note that the funding is shared with private schools, a portion of that. The key items that we're planning on using these funds for that we wrote the grant for is a Director of Opportunity, Access, and Equity for grades seven through 12 to meet the unique needs of the special student populations, stipends to support staff to improve district preparedness and response to COVID-19, summer learning programs, and after-school vacation and summer programs to support and enhance student learning, contractual services for professional development to staff, and translation services, supplies, testing and assessment, textbook software, PP&amp;E supplies to sanitize the schools, and other costs, which would include outdoor seating and classroom furniture for smaller classroom sizes. This grant, we applied for it for FY21, and it will go into FY22, into a couple months into FY22. The other grant that we have is called the CVRF, stands for Coronavirus Relief Fund, and this grant is $1,025,775. And this funding needs to be spent by 12/31/20, and it's the DESE Grant Number 102. This one is, does cover some salaries for the classroom teachers for the school reopening, support staffing for social distancing, mentoring for increased staffing, MTIRS, which is the Mass Teachers' Retirement System, which is required for federal positions that are grant-funded, contractual services, professional development, and the virtual high school. That was purchasing additional seats for the virtual high school. Supplies would include software programs, instructional technology, classroom supplies, including curriculum, other costs, which includes the storage trailers that Mr. Manzo asked about earlier, for relocation of classroom furniture and petitions, it also includes petitions, and equipment, which we're hoping to be able to purchase, mini buses for transportation. So if anybody has any questions on the grant funding, I can take those now.
All right, I'm looking for hands before I call upon myself. Mr. Manzo?
So does it include tents? Did I hear about tents?
Yes. So the outdoor, so as you can see, some of the ESSER grant and some of the CVRF grant and the CARES grant has all multiple purposes, but the tents would be included in one of these. It would not be coming out of our budget anywhere.
And then when you said testing, you meant assessment. You didn't mean like Corona testing?
Not Corona testing, but it would be educational testing on where students are.
Thank you.
Any other questions in the room before I call on myself? Yes, Ms. Robinson?
Can I just ask a question about the iPads? So are the, the kids who got the iPads, were they new, some of them in the fifth and sixth grade, or seventh and eighth?
Yeah, no, so the, we did a complete audit of all of the technology that we had for grades K through eight to make sure that, to figure out how we were going to do it.
Yeah.
We needed to purchase new iPads for grades two and three. So that said two and five, but it was actually two and three.
Okay.
The fifth-grade ones we purchased, we purchased actually out of FY20 because we appropriated for that, because every year we buy the fifth-grade iPads. The eighth-grade iPads that aged out went down to K1. So
Okay.
we did sort of a little bit of movement of them.
Okay.
We made sure that we, the K1s were in good working order. We utilized them. And so now that we have K through eight, a one-to-one availability of iPads.
Right. So
Of the grant money, the grades two and three were the iPads that were replaced.
Okay, so just a question about when the kids receive them. Some kids receive them without, I don't know if this is really part of this, but the kids, a lot of kids receive them without chargers.
We did not purchase chargers with them.
Okay, so will they have to purchase their own?
The chargers are regulated. If they have any for them, they can request them, but they don't, we just didn't automatically hand them out because so many people have those chargers already.
Okay.
And actually, there's a big push for environmental reasons to not just keep handing out. If you notice the new iPhones that are coming out of the new iPads, they're not providing them with chargers because there's so many chargers floating around for those ports. So, but we do have some available should they need it. But every classroom has a locker that charges. So there's a charging locker within the classrooms at any time if anyone needs to charge, quick charge.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions in the room before I call on myself? Ms. Trochek, Dr. Trochek, I wish to follow up on Karen's question. So I'm not, I'm not an Apple person.
Right. So you would just need to request one.
Or if, but they're all the standard, they all use the same type of charger, that's your point, even though it's a newer device, they're still using us?
All using the same, the same port, that all of the iPads use the same port now.
Okay, fantastic. All right. Piling on to Mr. Manzo's question about the tents, because we've had some conversations that we were going to order them, then we weren't going to order them. So are they in fact ordered, and when do we expect them to come?
So the tents were backordered for the ones that we were looking for. The order, I believe, I don't, I think we were looking for a different vendor because the receiving date from the original place that we were ordering from was taking a while. But some schools have purchased some smaller tents just on their own, but they're not the permanent tents that are going to be for the outdoor classrooms. So we're still working on that, on that purchase right now.
Okay, and continuing with the tent conversation, do we expect that they will be used year-round?
drivers, and the extent to which, I'm sorry, like I can't, one eye look at each of you at the same time, the point in time when we would have additional fleets and additional drivers to potentially open up the busing to those who do not really have to have it, right? Because we know we've had a lot of requests for that.
Yes, so the reason why, that we were asking for the mini buses for the transportation is that, you know, we have some buses that need to come off that, you know, that won't be passed, and it's time for us to, you know, roll over different buses, and therefore we were putting it in. We haven't purchased them yet because we just wrote for the grant on August 31st, so, and, you know, just getting it approved now. But we do plan on having those purchased, or at least an order out before December 31st, because that's the last day that you can actually, you know, uncover funds for this account. As far as having enough buses and that, I'll defer to Dr. Chorochek on her opening plan.
Your question is, are these additional buses, but these are replacement buses?
Perfect, that's fine.
So we're not building a larger fleet, we're replacing old buses and taking them off the road.
Right, okay, fine, because then if we are building a larger fleet, we should be talking about adding positions, so fantastic, thank you. I think I wish you to go back a slide. And I do appreciate the fact that you created this PowerPoint, and I apologize, my questions aren't better formulated, right, but you worked until the very last minute to bring these slides, and so I'm trying to question on the fly here. You talked about this particular money being able to, I don't remember your exact terms, but it can go into '22.
Yes.
2022.
Yes.
And can we just clarify that that means we can spend it both this year and next year, not that it's getting renewed this year and next year?
That is correct.
Is it one-time money that we, for which we have two years to spend?
Yes, yes. So when the grant actually came out, there was a way that you could request it for just FY20, from March through June, or you request it in FY21, which could go into, or a portion of each, so we did not use any of it for FY20, we did it for FY21, and it can roll into FY22, so yes, we would have these funds, and we can go over the two-year period, but it's not a renewable grant.
All right, I wish you to go back one other slide. And on this slide, I wish to ask, what is an elementary display?
For the wall, like the, right now we have smartboards, but these would be displays to replace the aging smartboards, so in some of the distance learning areas, we're not able to project, because those projectors are kind of on their last legs, so these would be elementary displays.
Okay, fantastic. I'm going to look on, I'm going to look one more time for hands, I'm looking on my Zoom attendees, Ms. Flowers. You can unmute.
Thank you, yes, thank you very much, Mrs. Visnick. I had a question that may or may not be relevant right now, but I was just curious, I'm following off of Dr. Chorochek on your point about having students outside in the winter with boots and snow suits, which I am really supportive of. I was just curious, is there a plan for, and maybe it's this money or other money, if, we know there's students who probably won't have adequate winter weather attire, and so is there a way that the district can help support those students to make them be safe and successful outdoors? Is that something that's already been thought about?
Well, that's a great question. We actually have, annually have helped with that, and we always identify any students that might need outerwear. We've had a group in Beverly that has been very helpful for us in doing that, we often have partners that help us with that, but it's certainly something that we will make sure that we have adequate. We do that on a regular basis without the outdoor learning in place, but we don't typically ask students to keep some of that kind of gear in school, or make sure they bring it daily, and so that, the difference this year is we're going to be asking them to make sure that they bring it with them. You know, it's aspirational at this point, however, it's very, a good aspiration, and so we're really working with it.
Great, thank you. I agree, it's a really good aspiration, and I was thinking, I know that you do provide some of that every year, but was thinking, you know, this sort of more robust snow pants and the whole, the whole thing, so certainly in my day job life, if there's ways that I can be helpful and supportive, and my community can, I'd love to connect with you on that, because I think this is a great aspiration.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Okay, we have a question in the room, and then I'll come back to you, Lindsay, all right? Mr. Silva?
With regard to the tents, was the cost looked into in terms of putting in walls and maybe propane heating if, for temperatures that might require it?
Yeah, I don't think we went that far, mostly, they're quite expensive as they are, and I think that the request was really just for the shelter top at this point. I don't know that we've looked into the sides, and I wasn't part of that conversation, so I'd have to check in with Dr. Flaherty, and actually Mrs. Brown had a part in that grant as well, so, but.
I have to imagine too, Lindsay, I'm coming to you next, that if we put the walls there, then it redo, it captures the air, right? We don't, we wouldn't want to capture the air, right?
It might undo some of the opening, yeah. You know, we didn't, we did, we were looking just as a roof cover, so we have a, we've been very fortunate, we have an outdoor learning classroom consultant that we have actually brought in, and she has met with each principal at each building and walked the grounds of each building to help identify the proper learning spaces for outdoor learning, as well as she's providing professional development for our teachers, to be able to, I mean, it is a different kind of way of thinking about teaching and learning and establishing routines and procedures, and so we've been working with the outdoor classroom consultant, and often sometimes they even just have sales, you know, there's a, there's a difference between just creating a room and trying to build the same classroom outside and diving into what we think is outdoor learning. So I think that played into the decision around the types of coverings that they were looking at.
Are you all set, Mr. Silva?
So, I mean, if the temperature is too cold, or there's blowing, I mean, find out an alternative, yeah.
All right, just like going out on the playground, right?
Right, it's like the heat index, right? We have a heat metric too that we watch as well, so.
Okay, Lindsay, did you have your hand up? You need to unmute, please unmute.
Yep, thank you. So I know I've captured so far that the tents are not coming out of the budget, and you wrote a grant, and if this is something you cover later in the presentation, I'm happy to hold my question. So the tents are not coming out of the budget, you wrote a grant at the end of August for the mini buses, which is just replacing older budgets and not increasing the fleet, so Larinda asked the question I had about drivers. I think what I'm really trying to capture is, I think the total that you came out to for the funding between FEMA, CARES, ESER, the CVRF, it comes up to just shy of $3 million. Is there anything else that you feel like you're going to need, and I apologize if this has been addressed in a separate school committee meeting of the whole, but I'm just trying to capture how much out-of-budget funding we're going to have specific to COVID needs, and what hasn't been covered by some of these other grants and government funding? Does that question make sense?
Yeah, so right now, there is no other needs that we're aware of at this time. As we go along, if something comes up, by all means, we will, you know, bring it forth and see if there's going to be savings within the budget that we can support it, if not, then we would, you know, go the route that we normally do and ask the city council, but right now, we do not see that.
The only one area that we are watching really closely is salaries, because we added a lot of staff, Jean's going to address that a little bit later in the meeting, and so a lot of the grant money is going to support that. We want, we have class sizes that are much smaller because of that, and we have the Remote Learning Academy, which we, you know, staffed as well, so, but in terms of the, you know, we've, I think we're in, you know, we were very, very fortunate with the grants that we got and what we have, and so aside from some need for, some, maybe salaries might run into the budget a little bit, but we'll, nothing that, well, Jean always says I'm not nervous, so that makes me very happy.
That's why I'm wearing the mask.
Thank you both.
All right, anybody else in the room? Mr. Manzo, go ahead, please.
Just one more, tell me about the hotspots that are being supported. Is that, is that in school hotspots, are they outside hotspots, are they?
I'll let Sue answer it, because she works with the technology.
Quite honestly, there's a combination of both, some are, we added some additional wireless hotspots at the building for the outdoor learning, to make sure that the signal's outside, so that they could utilize the devices outside as well, but the majority of it is the hotspots that we purchased for homes, for families that need them, so it covers both.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, we are, I think, unless I see any more hands, go back.
It's going forward.
It's going, okay.
It's one of my next items, I'm sorry, I didn't give you my presentation first.
I was just working on the agenda over here. We are ready to go to our next agenda item.
No, we're still on the same agenda item, I'm just going to my next slide, I have many slides, I'm sorry I did not prepare this in advance to send to you. The next thing that I have to talk about is the classrooms, so Ms. Visnick came in and visited with me two, three weeks ago, and told me that some of the items that she has heard people ask about, that she wanted to bring, so that's what this presentation's going to have, so this is one of the questions I asked about was classrooms at the elementary. So all the classrooms are set up with a 4.5 feet between the seat to seat, and at least six feet in front of the classroom for teacher space. So here we have a sample of some classrooms, so we did bring the school committee members, and a few of the city council members came out, and we went in towards some of the schools and to set it up. So what this is showing you here is what a typical classroom, you'll see that all the students are frontward facing, and there's four and a half feet between the seats, or in, in front of, and then six feet in the front of the classroom. The picture to, I don't know what to say that is, my right, is a small classroom, so Ms. Visnick had asked me, what happens if it's not a typical classroom? And that's, it's the same, except smaller, so, so we do make sure that we have the same spacing, and if we are in a classroom that's like a one-on-one with a teacher, then the spacing would be there, and we may have, we have given face shields to the instructors that are going to be working really close. And then my next slide is going to show you the middle school and the high school, same verbiage here, you can see the different shapes of the furniture, so that was one thing when we did our little tour to look at, where you see a square desk, you can kind of see visually, and when you have that different type shape desk, it's still the same distance, and the custodians had marked it up for the teachers to know where the desks need to be. So I guess I'll stop there and see if there's any further questions as far as the classroom, but that is what a typical classroom space is, and I'll be talking a little bit further on in case questions are going to come up about the HVAC that is forthcoming a few slides down.
Okay, Mr. Silva?
So I'm wondering about, in terms of, were there other, were there spaces in the building that you were able to utilize as classroom space, like cafeteria or other space?
Yep, and in two of our buildings, I know they moved out into the, either the library space, or what was an art room or a music room, if they needed to do that, and that was, because we did ensure that it was a minimum of four and a half feet, in some rooms it's a little more, and at the grades five through 12, it's a minimum of six feet. So we, with the littles, we kind of have them a little bit tighter together, but no closer than four and a half feet, so in a couple of the buildings, they're in some of the larger spaces. We had to either add classroom sections.
Will the fieldhouse be occupied?
The fieldhouse at the high school?
Or even the gymnasium here?
No, but we did not need to use those spaces in either, in either situation, at the high school or at the middle school.
All right, but that's available space that you could use in lieu of maybe bad weather with outdoor space?
Absolutely, yep. I mean, at this point in time, there's no classrooms designated in there, but there's a minimum number of kids, you know, I think we're looking really closely at what our activities are, and what we need to do, and how we might use that space. There was a conversation early on, if we were going to be providing lunch at the high school, we might have needed to use some of that space for that, but we're not providing lunch at this time, we're sending kids home at lunch.
The idea that lunch would be provided, or would be left for home, sort of opens up additional space.
It opens up, and the cafeteria space at the high school is actually now being used as classroom space, so there, any classroom that is over, so they have, because we're ensuring the six-foot distancing, there are some classes that are, have more than 12 students, and they need to move to larger spaces, so I know that the classroom, the cafeteria space now is being used for some of our other larger enrolled classes.
Okay.
And that space was more preferable than the fieldhouse, so they utilize the cafeteria space first. And if you've been there, they have, it can actually be sectioned off into three classroom spaces, the way that it works, so.
Okay, Ms. Robinson, after Mr. Manzo, okay, and I'm looking on Zoom.
I was just wondering what it means for class sizes across the district, then, just a ballpark.
Yeah, it's a great question, so there's not a finite number, because the space's sizes vary, but I would say we are ranging in-person at the elementary between 14 and 16. There's a couple of 17s that are in larger spaces, and that was by design, and then at the middle school, if you're on a team, there are 48 kids on a team, which is 24 kids in a class, which is 12 kids in a cohort, so really, there's no more than 12 students in a classroom at a time at the middle school, or at the high school, unless at the high school they're in a larger space. And I think, I think 12, 13, they might fit 13 desks in one high school, in a couple of the high school rooms when they need to, but really, as, at a time in-person, that's the numbers that we're at.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Robinson, and then Lindsay, I got you with your hand up.
Okay, so I was just wondering, the classes that are, that might go into the cafeteria, would they, are those classes that wouldn't require a smartboard, or are you able to bring something like that in?
My guess is they're using something like this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
If they need, if that's what they need.
Okay, Ms. Lindsay, if you'd like to unmute.
Sorry, Mr. Collins, thank you for hanging in, and I think, Jean, you might have said that later in your presentation, you're going to touch on the HVAC system, so my question is really on Mr. Collins's report, where it says you're fully confident at this point that all equipment is operational, and you used a third-party engineering firm to perform a rigid inspection. I wonder if the details of that report has been previously provided, if I missed it somewhere else, I'm happy to go get that myself, and again, if it's going to be addressed later in the presentation, I'm happy to wait as well.
Yes, that's going to be presented. I'm going to talk about enrollments next, and then I'm going to be talking about HVAC, outdoor space, cleaning, cafeteria, so it's quite a few more.
Wonderful, thank you so much, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm looking for any more hands before we let Jean move on. Go, Jean, go.
So the next thing I have is, we were asked about enrollment updates, so what we're bringing to the committee here is the report that we had on August 26 about enrollments, so the preschool enrollments, the current enrollment at that time, and I don't think it's gone up that much, but it's, the preschool is 96, and we have two programs that are going on, a five-day intensive, and intensive integrated with an early dismissal, and four-day AM/PM integrated, and that comes, they're not here on Wednesdays, and related therapies in person.
So if I can just say, if we, just remember, preschool enrollments are always increasing through the year as students age into the program, because we bring them from other programs, early intervention and that, and so I know there are, there will be anticipated students joining as the year goes on, as they age into the program, so I just thought it.
And there's screening going on.
And there's screening going on right now as well.
And then the elementary enrollments, I'm not sure if you want to talk, this is really your language.
Sure, yeah, I'll be happy to. So the, these are the elementary enrollments, again, this was an August 26 snapshot, I can tell you that our kindergarten enrollments are up from 367 now to about 376, so up about nine students, that gave us, all registered within the last three or four days, just right before the start of school, which is something that happens regularly, they were kind of evenly split, some requested Remote Learning Academy, and some requested in-person, and so those are all in their classrooms now, and the other, the other enrollments are pretty steady as to where they were on August 26, so these are our elementary enrollments by grade level and by building.
All right, while we're on this slide, Jean, before you switch, Dr. Chorochek, perhaps at the next committee of the whole, perhaps next week, could we have this, like, broken down to the next level that you sometimes bring to us?
Oh, but yes, yeah, I can ask, yes, you can probably do that.
That's terrible English, maybe you could read.
In the other spreadsheet.
Yes, the other spreadsheet that shows us the class sizes, which is what you were asking about, I believe, Mr. Manzo, right? Because that's what I was asking about as well.
Yeah.
So we don't have that tonight, but hopefully we'll show that next week.
Yep.
Fantastic, thank you.
The next one, slide, Dr. Chorochek, is middle school.
And again, I think the middle school held a little bit steady, I think there was, that's pretty much where they're at right now, I don't think there was a huge increase, there was some, there was some movement. There was some, there was some movement in that when we switched to hybrid, we had some people who requested in-person and we had virtually the same number that requested remote learning academy. The middle school was able to accommodate anyone that had reached out and asked for that. So at this point in time, the numbers didn't change or fluctuate that much. It's just that there might be more in remote or less in hybrid, but different people, so. And I spoke with Lisa Oliver today and she said they were able to accommodate all the requests that they got.
And the next one we have is the high school.
Yep, and the same thing, the high school, the enrollments haven't changed greatly. Again, we did have requests, we accommodated requests, we had requests to come in hybrid, we were able to kind of meet the needs of anyone that had reached out.
All right, I'm watching for hands. All right, we have several hands. Lindsay, you're last on the list because you chose to save us all from your germs and we appreciate that. I probably should let you go first though. I believe I saw Mr. Silva first.
I just have a quick question about the mechanics of the kids' like classroom when they're at the school. What, do the kids stay in the same class?
Well, that's a great question, yes. Yep, so in the K through four, they stay in the same group of 16 children that they're with all day. They never mingle, even at recess or snack break. When they go outside, each classroom has a designated outdoor space. So there's no inter co-mingling of students and the same teacher, classroom teacher stays with them. The only slight co-mingling of anybody would be if there was a special education teacher that might join the class for a short period of time. In addition, a specialist is usually assigned with them and they remain with them largely for the whole day, so.
So kids are staying in place, teachers are moving around?
And at the middle school, kids are staying in place. So at the middle school, you're in your classroom, the teachers are rotating. At the high school, that's not the case. The high school, the students are moving with their schedule from class to class. So teachers, but that's one of the reasons why we went to the semester-long block schedules. So the number of contacts is limited to about between 80 and 110.
And is that just because you couldn't do a similar type design in the high school?
You can't do that with the schedules because of the content and the program of studies and the number of different classes and sections that are going on. So it was really, we, there's no way. So what we did instead is looked at, and the challenge was that at some level, some of the teachers had 180 contacts a day and some of the students had similarly a large number over the course of a week. And so that was important to us. We wanted to limit the number of contacts among people. And so that was why we, you know, we sort of opted for that. And it's been, that has been successful in being able to do that.
Okay, cool. All right, thank you.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to ask another question about remote learning academy and just, there's been a lot of questions about, especially at the high school level, trying to get, trying to get in. So I understand that, is that closed now?
So I can't give you a finite answer on that. What happened, the essence was that it was closed. When we, when the decision was made to go to hybrid, we, Mrs. Taylor combed the seats, there's a finite number of seats and I don't know, I can't tell you tonight if it's, if they're full, but there is a finite number. When those seats are full, we don't have any more seats. At this point in time, she has told me that there's, that she's been able to accommodate everybody, so.
Okay, so can I, can I just ask how many, we might not know this tonight, but how many people have requested remote learning academy since last week?
So I did ask that question Monday, which is today Wednesday, and it was 13 at the time.
13, okay. So is there a possibility for students who are, who would like to stay remote to be able to, I guess for a lack of better terms, like beam into a classroom?
It's not in our MOE.
Okay, okay.
Not in our MOE.
Could they be on a meeting, a Zoom meeting?
Anyone that has requested the need for that has talked to the principal and at this point in time, I've not heard of anyone who was not able to be accommodated that, in terms of that, you know, that, I don't know, I didn't check today or like, you know, yesterday, but the, the number of seats that she, were identified and we opened it up to the people that requested and were able to fill seats just as, as we could. So as far as I know, there's not anyone outstanding that hasn't been able to have their schedule met or their need met.
Thank you.
Goilo, do you want to pile on to Ms. Robinson's, otherwise you're in line behind Mr. Menzo.
Yes, I wanted to pile on.
Pile on.
So I wanted to piggyback on hers. So with those numbers, we have 13, 11 high schoolers.
Yes.
80 of them chose remote learning academy.
Yeah, I would say that number might be a little higher by now because some of the new requests.
It was about 13, you told Ms. Robinson.
Yeah, I would say it's around, maybe around 100 or 110 because that number was an August 26 number. That was well before the meeting that she's referencing.
Okay, so it was offered to them, there's over 1,300 children and just over about 100 only chose remote learning academy.
Yep.
Okay, that's a fantastic number. Thank, thank you.
Mr. Menzo, you're next in line. Lindsay, you're on deck.
It's mostly the same question. So you covered the, the change in numbers at the high school. So what's going on in seven and eight for those students that?
Their, you know, the schedules were worked out for the seven and eight, same thing. Mrs. Oliver reported to me, yesterday I asked and she said there was, that any, that she was able to accommodate the request she had received to that, to that point. The place that we have the largest number of students is our elementary. We have about 400, I don't know what my numbers here say. At the time, it was 397. I think we got up to about 412 or 413 students in the remote learning academy for K through four. And I actually was able to visit them today and those programs are going really well and so, you know, that was, we're glad that we were able to do that for families that that's what their choice was.
And just remind me, because I'm not in the loop as much as I used to be, so then there are other options now for students to either go from the remote academy?
The end of the term.
At the end of a term.
Well, if we have seats.
And the other way around?
And the other way around.
The other way around, if there's seats.
If there's seats, right. And that was, you know, that was what we had shared with everyone at the beginning when we began doing this, that at the end of the term. So at the term, by the term, we said second quarter for high school, end of the first trimester for middle school.
And then elementary?
Trimester.
Trimesters, okay.
The trimester.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Lindsay?
Thank you. So my question, Dr. Trocheck, is about communication. This may not be something that's hit your radar yet. I'm not getting, so I have one kiddo in RLA and one kiddo going into the school. And for a while, I haven't been getting, we're at HANA, but we haven't been getting HANA emails and I know that we're not alone and I know that that requires a call to central office. I didn't get around to doing that today. But I wonder, is that intentional? And I just worry if that is intentional, that we're missing a lot of information specific, not just because we want our kids to continue to be connected to our homeschool, but some of that information may be really important and relevant.
Yeah, so, yeah, so that's not intentional. But as a matter of fact, we, we had to work through Aspen, so there's a number of layers. So what was intentional is that for the RLA, we did not want to drain the resources of one particular building. We wanted the teachers that were teaching in the remote learning academy to have the same access to coaching and to, you know, all of the, the things that they needed to get resource-wise. So we decided we had five grades, we had five elementary schools, we would align each grade level with one building so that we weren't putting too much of a drain on one set of coaches or one principal or, or anything like that. The setting up of Aspen with the correct filters for the principals to be able to filter the way they send emails took a while. And so I know that that filtering was just set up. So it, it sounds really complicated, but the way that we needed to enroll students in certain ways so that teachers could grade, so that attendance could be taken, so that they could be aligned with the school that they needed to be aligned with for all of those things, needed to do some reshuffling in how they were listed in Aspen. And then once we did that, we needed to reset filters so that Gabrielle Montivecki would have the ability to email someone that had a HANA homeschool. So those things are being worked on. So eventually, and I think we're pretty close, I think I saw an email come across my desk today that the RLA filters were close to being ready to use, then now they will have that ability to go back and be able to do that. And there will be some communications that go only to in-person students that are, you know, specific to in-person learning. There'll be some communications that only go to remote learning academy students that are specific, and that may be that all of the K to four remote learning academy are able to get, you know, a communication. And then there may be some that Ms. Montivecki wants to send to all of the students in her building in person as well as the kindergarten remote learning academy, as well as anyone that has that homeschool. So it took a while for those filters to be set up so that the principals can access them. But I believe they're close to being ready now. But actually, our intention was just the opposite, to be able to do that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Lindsay, are you all set?
I think so, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Silva?
You were just talking about communication and this has come up in discussions with not only my children, but some other children that I, that I know. I'm wondering in terms of, in terms of communicating to the child, is all of that happening through their school email?
From the teacher?
Instruction for the student for their classwork and what's expected of them.
So each student has a, each student has their own email and it's, they utilize it through Google Classroom. Except at the high school, they utilize Moodle and some people use Google Classroom. So at the K to eight, there's a Google Classroom and their teachers would be communicating through there. I believe it's a BHS Connect.
So some of the feedback that I got is that, and I don't know if this is coming from software or other things, that there's, is there a way that spam is getting sent to students where it's filling up their emails?
I don't know that. I can ask the IT, that's, I've not heard that before. That's, this is, you know.
I mean, the reason why I bring this up is because I've, I've heard responses about, you know, the reason why they're not certain about what's going on is because they've got too much email in their inbox and there's a lot of spam.
That's a good question. I'll have to check on that. I don't have a good answer.
I think that's a real serious concern because if too much information, useless information is sent to them, they basically would turn it off and, and the mechanism for communicating what needs to be done will be lost.
Yeah, I agree. But I, I'll have to check into that and find out if that's, you know, I can easily have IT check that, so, thanks.
Ms. Goilo?
Thank you. I just wanted to talk with Mr. Menzo. So I have three children in the school system, one in high school, one in middle school and one in elementary school. So I have a lot of emails to read. So I, so I do check all three of their emails the last two weeks. They have had all the emails that they've needed and I've been able to read them. My personal email gets way more spam than the rest of it. So from my own personal children's emails, I have been able to see all their teacher communications and all their links.
Thank you.
All right, are we good? All right, next slide, please.
The next slide is going to be Mr. Collins on deck in regards to the HVAC consultant report. So the Department of Public Services retained BTQ, B2Q associates to calculate the design ventilation metrics such as outside air and changes per hour and total air changes per hour in the city's elementary schools. And attached is the analysis and that's what Lindsay was asking. And this did go out to the committee. In my first email when I gave all the reports, this one was in there and it starts with, I think it says BTQ.
BTQ Associates Report PDF is one of the attachments in, in your packet for those of you following along on your computers.
So I'm not sure if you want to have Mr. Collins speak about this or, I mean, it did go out to the committee in, when I sent the packet out.
All right, Jean, do you want me to steal and I'll share it for a second?
Sure.
We'll see if we can manage this. Stealing the share, sharing. Make this a little larger for people at home. Okay.
So I don't know if you want to have Mr. Collins just give a little synopsis of what this is.
I always love to hear Mr. Collins enlighten us.
Good evening, thanks for having me here. And let me just start by quickly saying how proud I am of all the staff of the school department. Not just the custodians who put in months of very hard work to first clean the schools and reorganize and moving furniture around, trying, you know, three feet, four and a half feet, six feet. So it's, it's been a, it's been a very trying time. Met with all of them recently and, and expressed my gratitude to them for, you know, how we feel about coronavirus today is a lot different than we felt six months ago. And six months ago, if you remember, it was, it was, it's scary today, it was really scary then. It was, it was quite frightening, yet the staff of the Buildings and Grounds Department, without faltering, came to work every day and did their job as the people who come into the building and make sure that everyone else is safe. And I'm very grateful for, for their service, for, for coming to work every day and continuing to come to work throughout all of those times of, of high stress and far more unknowns than knowns. Not that we know a lot more now, but I think we've kind of become a little bit used to this, this routine. So, you know, the custodial staff, but it's, it was great to work with the school administration across the board, you know, at the school level and talk to Trocheck and all of her assistants. It was a very collaborative effort throughout the last six months and I've enjoyed the process tremendously. And there've been quite a few people from the Public Works Department as well that have been spending the last several months in the schools, making sure that things are up to snuff. So turning our attention to this, what we focused on at first, and this, what this report deals with, is the elementary schools throughout the district because that's where the year was going to be the most intense use where all the kids are coming back five days a week. So kind of, sort of full-time, as you know. And so, and those buildings are also, we're very fortunate that the buildings are renovated within the last 22 years and modernized, but they're not quite as new as say the middle school and high school. So we, we focused our effort on those schools because that's where we're going to have the most students and staff initially, given the fact that we didn't have an unlimited amount of time. So we worked with BT2Q associates and we, there's, there's a lot of moving parts to this report. And, and I'll just note that, like all of you, we spend a lot of time on the internet looking at what everyone else is doing. And I will say that the approach we've taken here is to try to make things understandable because what we're trying to do is we're trying to first satisfy ourselves that things are good and then we're trying to help communicate that message to our students and our staff and our parents and our community that things are in fact good in the schools. And when I look around the country at different school districts and the reports they're producing, frankly, I think they're very difficult to read and they're using metrics that are not understandable. And they're doing that because schools are not designed with some of these metrics that you're going to see in this report. So we had to calculate these metrics in order to try to provide something that the average person who doesn't know a lot about HVAC can understand. So when we look at air changes per hour, that's not, that's not a number that a school, that's not how a school is designed. We design on cubic feet per minute per occupant or cubic feet per minute per square foot of space. And, and from, from that perspective, all of our schools meet and exceed all of the available standards for current designs. What we did then is we took those numbers and we converted them into air changes per hour and that's something that's a little bit more comprehensive, a little bit easier for somebody to understand because you can just picture, well, I'm in a classroom, there's a volume of air in this classroom, how many times in an hour does that volume of air get replaced? And you can see the different metrics for the schools here. We, we have two columns. The outside air changes per hour, that's how much air is coming through the UNIVENT in the classroom, into the classroom and then being pulled out through the exhaust fan on the opposite side of the classroom. The way a UNIVENT works is it's not all, the air that's coming out of the fan is not all outside air, some of it's recirculated air. And that's done because in non-COVID times, really our concerns are carbon dioxide from people breathing and not that that is going to be harmful, but if, you know, you really couldn't, you'd have to have a lot of people in a room for that to be harmful. But, you know, it can make a room feel stuffy and uncomfortable if it builds up. So the air is replaced all the time with a portion of outside air, but then the other thing we're concerned about is typical, just your typical pollutants and allergens, ragweed or pollen and things like that that are, that can make life uncomfortable. ragweed or pollen and things like that, that can make life uncomfortable. So a portion of the air is outside air, and a portion of the air is recirculated through a filter in each classroom. So that's why you see two columns here. That's, you're looking at the first column, which is how much, how many times per hour the air in the classroom is completely replaced. And that's largely a function of the exhaust fan on the other side of the classroom, on the hallway side of the classrooms pulling out about that much air, and it's replaced with new air. And then the fan in the univent has a certain capacity, and that's reflected by the right-hand column, which is the total air changes per hour. So in these cases here, it's, you know, I'm just very, very loosely generalized that about twice as much air that comes in through the outside air is recirculated on a constant basis. So the one thing that a univent does very well is it mixes the air in the classroom so you don't have dead zones where there's stale air or pockets of stale air trapped. The univent actually happens to be, it's not how you would design a classroom today. And that's why the high school and the middle school don't have univents. But it happens to be sort of a sledgehammer way of heating and cooling a classroom. You know, it's worked. It's a very reliable technology. It's worked for a long time. But it happens to have one trait that works really well in this situation. When the air enters the classroom, it blows straight up against the window wall. That's typically done for window washing purposes, and I don't mean that in the sense of cleaning. I mean, it's washing the cold window with heat, so you don't get that curtain of cold pushing down on you all the time in the winter. For COVID concerns, that's an excellent way of entering the air into the classroom and mixing, because it's blowing straight up at the ceiling, up the wall, up the ceiling, and it rotates throughout the classroom. So you're not blowing directly on a person. So if you were to have an individual who was positive, the good news is you wouldn't be blowing directly on them because that's, you know, I'm sure you've all seen the stories about restaurants where somebody sits directly in front of a vent. And so it's a good design from that standpoint. So our engineers first had to assemble the square footage of every space in the schools, and then we went a combination of design plans, field measurements, and prior reports that we had to assemble the airflow ratings for each classroom, and those are expressed in this report. And generally, these are, one of the things we tried to give for perspective is, while schools are not designed for air changes per hour, the CDC does recommend certain air change per hour metrics for hospital spaces. And if we look at an ICU room, you might see two outside air changes and six total air changes per hour. And, you know, you can see that our classrooms typically exceed something like that. So these are, this is some of the metrics that the CDC publishes, just by way of comparison, because we don't have any, we don't have any metrics like that that existed prior to the last month or two where some people have opined with different numbers that they think that we should achieve. But these are established metrics based on, you know, decades of work by infectious disease experts for hospital settings. So just gives you some idea that we have some pretty good ventilation in our schools across the board. We paid special attention to look for spaces where we felt maybe there were some shortcomings. And for the most part, there really aren't spaces like that. We did note maybe in one school where there was a room, which was previously a storage room in a prior life, and prior to COVID, there was a single seat and a single desk in that room where a teacher could bring a single student and do breakout work. Perfectly acceptable in a non-COVID world, even though that room did not have its own dedicated ventilation source. It'd be perfectly fine, because they would typically leave the door open. Even if they didn't leave the door open, they'd be in there for short duration. It's not, nobody would think twice about it. And now that we're in a COVID world, we just say, okay, don't use that room. And, you know, it's a 6x10 room, so it's not a big loss to the school in terms of capacity. So along with this, we spent, as we do every summer, we spent the summer going through a process for us that is akin to a retrocommissioning process, where we go and we visit each piece of equipment. The custodians have certain tasks that they perform, cleaning and changing filters and things like that. But we bring in our own outside engineers, our outside vendor, and we work with them, and we open up every piece of equipment, and we put it through its paces. And we command, we have computerized controls, we command the valves open and close, the dampers open and close, turn the motors on and off, and we check to see if everything's functional. And, you know, because we're made up of tens of thousands of moving parts, not everything is always functional. So of course, there's things to be repaired, switches, bearings, motors, things like that, which is normal. And rather than compile a list for later repair, we know kind of what we're going to see, and we start off our process armed with spare motors, capacitors, switches, and bearings. And as we identify anything that has a shortcoming, we replace the parts right then and there before we move on to the next device. So by the end of our process, everything has been tested and any necessary repairs or adjustments have been made. So that's part of our annual process that we go through anyway on all of the equipment. But we, I will say, we obviously gave it a little extra special attention this year just to make sure that particularly exhaust fans are working, which, you know, they always are. But we spent a lot of time on exhaust fans, trying to, even trying to get some of the ones that were, I'm sure people wouldn't necessarily notice it, but some of the exhaust fans, they get out of balance, and they vibrate quite a bit, and you might be in a school and go, what is that noise? And that would be us. So we tried to spend some time getting some of those things, replacing bearings and trying to balance some things out, or replacing them altogether if they were just too loud and became obnoxious. I can talk more, or I can, if anyone has any questions about this, I'd rather see what we can get into.
Okay, I'm looking for hands. I'm looking on the Zoom. Ms. Lindsay?
Thank you. I got to be quicker with the mute. My question is about mold. I know some of the roofs are quite old, and I believe there's some linking issues from time to time. And I wonder if, with the amount of closure that we experienced, which was obviously more than what a typical summer is, if you found any evidence of that, and if you used any sort of, or if B2Q used any sort of special steps, cautions, equipment to test for that?
No, I mean, mold is not something that we typically have widespread issues with. You need a couple of things to have mold. You need water, you need moisture, and you need food for the mold. And the food can be anything, you know, usually dust and the things contained in dust, or any sort of cardboard, paper, fabric, that type of thing. So when we do have leaks, and, you know, like any, we have, I don't know, several hundred thousand square feet of roof. So occasionally, there's a small leak. We're able to usually repair those almost immediately. And then when you get mold, is if you have a chronic leak that doesn't get fixed for months and months and months on end, and we tend to not, we would never let a leak go that long. And our leaks tend to be very, very small, maybe get a single ceiling tile wet. We just replace out that ceiling tile with a dry one, and the story. So we typically don't see issues with mold, and we, you know, we use normal precautions. I mean, you know, nowadays, everyone's wearing some sort of a face covering. So obviously, when we open up a unit, we're stirring up a lot of dust, because those do get dusty inside. And within the dust, there are allergens and things like that that can bother you. But honestly, that's kind of, I think, most of the technicians that we have and myself, we're used to that. We're used to working in dirty places, so. But no, we don't typically see any real issues with mold. And like I said, the leaks that we have had have been point minor, and we try to repair them as soon as we identify them. We usually take, we bring in a consultant, a roofing consultant, this time of year, every year, before the winter sets in, and we go and we survey all of our roofs, and we go looking for trouble. We go looking for cuts and seams that are starting to separate, and try to make those easy repairs, because our roofs are largely rubber, except for the high school and the middle school, and it's supposed to its own animal. And rubber may not be the longest-lived roofing material, but it's incredibly easy to repair. Like, so we do a lot of repairs ourselves. If we see a cut or a seam that's starting to open, we fix it ourselves.
All right, I'm looking around the room before I call myself. Mr. Manzo?
I just wanted to, I think this is a question that came up before. I just wanted to make sure I got the answer correctly at a previous meeting. In terms of airflow throughout the classrooms, air doesn't mix between classrooms, is that correct?
The way the elementary schools are designed, each classroom, you can see this is a cross-section of a univent. This is sort of a simplified view of what a univent looks like, and you're looking at the end of it. So the tallest line is actually a wall with a window in it. So every classroom has its own univent. So you can see there's a grill. If you walk around the outside of an elementary school, you see those grills, those louvers down low. That's to let in fresh air into the univent, not the entire. That louver is much bigger than the actual opening. The actual opening's only a few inches inside there. But, so you're bringing in fresh air. Each classroom has its own univent, its own dedicated source of fresh air. The air that's in the classroom doesn't mingle with any other classroom's air. And then each classroom has its own dedicated exhaust fan. Sometimes exhaust fans are gang, so you might have one fan serving a number of classrooms. But because the exhaust fans are all under negative pressure all the time, there's no way to cross-contaminate, if you will, one classroom with another, because the air is always being pulled out of the respective classrooms. And so, yes, each classroom has a dedicated source of air. In the high school and the middle school, it's a totally different style of ventilation, more rooftop. It's all rooftop ventilation with dedicated ducts going to each classroom. So there's a supply side and a return side, which are totally separate. So each classroom has its own, there's a, just like a street, there's a major highway, major trunk line that goes down the hallway with branch lines that go off into each classroom and supply each classroom. And then on the return side, there's a separate return. So each classroom has a dedicated source and a dedicated return of air, and the air goes up to the roof. And we exhaust the air out through the roof and bring in fresh air through the rooftop unit. So, no, they don't, none of those spaces, none of the classrooms share ventilation in that respect.
Thank you.
All right, I'm looking around the room. I'm looking on Zoom. Any hands on Zoom before I call on myself? Mr. Collins, I put up this picture because I wish to ask you to speak to the filter number in the elementaries versus the middle school versus the high schools?
Sure. In this, you can see that low piece there, the arrow of the filter, there is a filter that all the outside air and all the recirculated air passes through a filter. And, you know, keep in mind that these things were designed prior to COVID, prior to, you know, airborne contagions and things like that. So they're really designed to remove, like I said, your typical allergens, you know, pollen and dust and things like that, for two reasons. They want to make the air healthy for the individuals inside the room. But also, right above that filter is the heating coil. And if that heating coil gets plugged up, you can no longer heat the classroom. That slows the air down. So one of the things we have to do periodically is clean those heating coils. Even though there's a filter, there's, you know, there's years and years and years of running, you know, a little bit of dust builds up on the coil, so we clean them. Anyway, so we, you hear a lot in the news about MERV-13 filters, which is sort of equivalent to an N95 mask. It's sort of the N95 of ventilation equipment, in terms of its filtering capabilities and efficiencies. These univents, we spoke to the manufacturer of them, and really, each piece of equipment is designed for a specific filter, a specific size and a specific filter efficiency, and a certain pressure drop across the filter. So if you can picture like breathing through a wet towel, if you were to put a MERV-13 filter in here, first off, it would be very difficult to fit it in here. There is such a thing as a MERV-13 that would physically fit in here, but it's a miracle they can fit it in, because our filters are one inch thick. And when a filter is sold to you, it's one inch thick, that means it's really three quarters of an inch thick, because filters are always a little bit smaller than the nominal dimensions. So if you put a MERV-13 filter, for instance, in a univent, you'd basically get no airflow through the univent at all, a very, very small amount of airflow. So then we have to back up and say, okay, what is the maximum rating of the filter we can put in there? We spoke to the manufacturer of our equipment, because they're all basically the same across the district, because they're similar vintage, and the univent really hasn't changed the design. The ones we tore down in Memorial, they're designed for steam heat, but they're the same basic thing as what you see here. They work out the same principles. So this is a decades-old design. The manufacturer suggested that we don't run anything more than a MERV-5 in our univents. And I said, okay, we've been running eights for years, so we're going to stay with the eights. So we have a MERV-8 in all of our univents. And that's, you know, that is nicely offset by the fact that we're bringing such a tremendous volume of air through the classroom compared to other spaces. So while that may not, you know, we may not be able to get the MERV-13 filter in there, we're able to move a lot of air. There is a filter. The filter does pick up particles. And keep in mind, there's two things about the metrics that we've developed for comparison's sake. When we talked about the classroom volume, length, width, times height, that's the gross volume of a classroom. That doesn't take into account, because that's the number we have available to us. And without going in with a tape measure and measuring every single room and every space, we stayed with the gross volume, because it gave us a more conservative answer. The gross volume doesn't take into account the finishes, the tile, the cabinet that the univent is in, the furniture, the desks, the drywall, the brick on the other side of the classroom, whatever it is. So it doesn't take into account any of those finishes. So the actual net volume of the room is actually smaller. So the numbers we've presented are a little bit conservative in that respect. So at the high school and the middle school, totally different volume. At the middle school, for instance, they're both rooftop unit supplied. So all of your air is coming from a big unit on the roof, a big fan on the roof. At the middle school, there's actually two sets of MERV-13 filters that the air passes through before it enters the school. So not only are we using MERV-13, it's actually a double layer of MERV-13s. So that's a unit, when you go to a MERV-13, you have to have more square feet of filter in order to have enough airflow through that filter bed. So if you can design from the beginning for a MERV-13, that's great. You have the right horsepower fans and the right-sized filter beds, then we're in good shape. So the air gets, comes, again, it's outside air, so we're really just going crazy filtering out allergens, because it's all outside air that's being supplied. We have the capability at the middle school of recirculating a portion of the air. We have a very sophisticated building that has CO2 sensors in every single classroom. And the way it's designed is that it monitors the CO2 level. So when there's nobody in the classroom, there's actually an occupancy sensor and a CO2 sensor, and they work together. If there's nobody in the classroom, the ventilation, the local fan for each classroom that's above each classroom in the ceiling shuts off, and the temperature in the classroom sets back a little bit. And then when somebody enters the room, the fan turns on, it sees them, the lights turn on, the fan turns on, so you start supplying air again. This is the way it's designed to work. And then as people start to occupy the room, the CO2 sensor starts to pick up, oh, you know, baseline CO2 is 410 parts per million, and once you start to get up to 450, 500, then the fan starts to speed up and supply more air to the classroom. So it's a way of gauging the occupancy of the classroom and matching the airflow to the occupancy load. So it's a very sophisticated system in that regard. And at that zero occupancy level, the way the building was designed, that's not how we're going to operate it, we would recirculate some of the air in through the system. When we're in recirculation mode, the air in fact goes through a third set. fact, goes through a third set of MERV-13 filters. So on its trip back to the unit, it goes through a set of filters. So it would actually get filtered three times if we were to recirculate. So we're modifying the sequence of all this equipment. So we're ignoring the CO2 sensor and just having fans run based, you know, assuming that there's full occupancy. And we're maximizing the outdoor air portion of it. At the high school, it's a similar setup, but a different way of skinning the cat where it's massive, four massive rooftop units. If we just talk about the classroom tower alone, there's four massive rooftop units that supply all of the air to the classes, heated and cooled air to the classes, and our dehumidified air. And each classroom, it's, again, it's filtered. The air goes in the classroom, goes out through the exhaust fan on the opposite side of the classroom, up to the rooftop unit, and then gets exhausted out to the atmosphere, not to be recycled. So that, so we don't, during the daytime, we actually don't recycle. The way the design of that school was, from the beginning, we never recirculated the air during occupied modes. So in a way, in terms of coronavirus, the filter is irrelevant because we're not recirculating air.
Fantastic. Lindsay, I see your hand up.
Thank you. So I want to make sure I understand all of this. So it seems like the difference between the high school and the middle school, please correct me if I'm wrong, is just that we have older buildings with older, but you said still, you basically said still satisfactory systems in the elementary schools, these univents. They're on the interior of the buildings. And it sounds like you're basically trading what could be a better quality vent for a large amount of new air coming into the room. Is that, is that accurate? I guess that's the first part of my question. I'll let you answer that before I ask the second part, if that's okay.
Yeah, the technology is much older. It doesn't mean it's bad. Where it falls short, if anything, is on energy efficiency. So this isn't the most energy-efficient way to deal with it. Because frankly, from a code standpoint, we're bringing in more air than we need to. So from a building code standpoint, we're bringing in more air than we need to. So, yeah, you know, you don't have the filter efficiency, but you are bringing in, you're moving a lot more air in this situation.
So I think the second part of my question, then, is I know we have a number of elementary schools, but have you, have we gone so far as to look at what it would cost to replace these units with more sufficient filter or with different, more newer technology filters that would allow as much air, good air quality as we need, but also better filters?
So the, each univent, if we wanted to replace it in kind with the same, you know, the modern equivalent of it, which is, you know, we might be able to get it designed for a better, more efficient filter. Each filter, each univent itself as an assembly would be about $10,000. That's just delivered to our front door. And it would be a lot of money to install that same univent. So, you know, you'd be talking across the six elementaries, including McEwen when I say six, you know, the multimillion-dollar project. And, you know, it would be pretty difficult and expensive. And I'm not sure what benefit you would really realize because I think that if you, if you look at the, all we know is our school district, right? You know, all we know is our buildings. Well, if you look around the country, we are light-years ahead of most places in terms of our ventilation. In terms of the testing we did, I don't want to point fingers at my fellow building managers, but, you know, you've read some of the stories of some of the largest districts and, you know, testing with tissue paper on a stick. You know, we've gone well beyond that. We've quantified. We're not just saying, hey, look, you've got airflow. We're saying, this is how much airflow you've got. And keep in mind, the other important thing, I knew I had two points to remember, and I forgot one. The second thing is, all of this assumes the windows are closed. Open up the windows, and it's a whole new ballgame. You're bringing in a lot more fresh air. And we expect to be able to have the windows open at least a little bit, all but like, you know, the blowing snow and miserable, you know, 10-below days. And, you know, I'll be honest with you, this is a point that Superintendent and I have not talked about at all. But, you know, just like there are the hot and humid heat days that we might go remote on, I'm guessing that the decision on snow days for all school districts now is going to be a lot easier. Just go remote, right? I don't, you know, we haven't talked about that. And I'm sure we'll have to, you know, when we can take a breath, we'll think about that policy. But, you know, if you have a day when it's 15 below zero, and, you know, you might say, we can't, we can't open windows today because it's just too cold, then, you know, why heat up the buses and why move everybody if we can just go remote for a day and suffer through it? So I don't want to, I don't want to try to set policy in that state or anything. But that's something, like I said, we'll talk about as we go forward.
Actually, we're anticipating guidance from the Department of Ed on remote days and how we call them, and whether or not the, whether or not we've seen the end of the traditional snow day, which would now convert to a remote day. So there's some guidance coming on that as well. So.
Mr. Manzo?
So, Mike, since you brought it up, all the elementary schools, the windows open in all the classrooms?
Absolutely, 100%. I checked them myself, and then I got through one school and said, this is silly. I know they open. I'm not aware of a single window that we're having an issue with. And if anyone comes across one, easily fixed, we'll fix it right away.
And at the middle and high school, the windows don't open, right?
Yep. Yep, windows all open.
Oh, they do?
Yeah, they do. Oh, absolutely. No, every, so it's an odd thing. When we designed, there was no such thing as LEED, which is a performance standard for schools, not just energy efficiency, it's about air quality as well. LEED didn't exist for schools when we built the high school. So we built it to mass chips or mass chips plus, certified high-performance school. So that requires, you know, one of the important things for a classroom environment is light. And the other thing is fresh air, access to fresh air. So they require operable windows as a standard for most educational spaces, not every single. So you might have a banned room, for instance, that doesn't have air. So there are certain rooms, a limited selection of rooms that don't have windows or operable windows, but they do have a dedicated air source. But every classroom has operable windows. A little bit different story at the high school and the middle school. Last week, we had some ridiculously humid days. And that's a situation where both schools have some level of, we don't call it air conditioning because it's really not designed as air conditioning. If you say it's air conditioning, then you have to meet a certain performance standard all of the time. And because you are committing to being able to cool the building every day of the year, even on that 110-degree day, you've grossly oversized the system. So we have tempered air, which I know that's a, that's splitting the hair there. But so we can dehumidify the air, so we can control the humidity of the air. And when we do that, we're using the same components that you use to air conditioning a building, to cool a building. So that air that's being entered into the high school and the middle school classrooms is dehumidified, and it's cooler than the outside air. What that means is, on that disgustingly hot, humid day, if you open the windows, you can introduce humidity into that cool environment. And when the air temperature drops, it gets close to the dew point, and then things get wet. And then, that's a situation where you can introduce mold into the building. Because you're now, if somebody went home and left all their windows open with the air conditioning running, you're going to get the surfaces, the ceiling tiles start to sag, the floors get wet, papers start to curl. So there are days when, last week, when Mike Parker sent out an email to the high school saying, hey, Tay, don't open your windows because it's just going to cause more problems than it's going to solve. But, you know, those days obviously get a lot fewer as we go forward. We traditionally have always told people at the high school and the middle school, don't open your windows because the building was designed to operate with closed windows. If you open your windows in the springtime, you're letting pollen and dust into the classroom. You know, you're really, like I said, causing more problems than you're solving. So we, in normal times, would ask people not to open the windows. Nowadays, we're just asking them to pay attention to the humidity outside. And other than that, yes, every classroom is operable windows.
All right, Mr., are you all set, Mr. Manzo?
Just for the sake of argument, we get this diagram of a univent that we're looking at. Can you, can you close the return air louver and only get fresh air into a room?
We would have both open at the same time. I'm trying to remember. No, you would need to have both open because you'd starve the unit for air.
Okay. I thought it was something we had to at least look at.
I'm sorry?
I think that was a question that we just at least had to ask.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, no, you know, so, you know, what our focus is on is redesigning our sequence of operations so that outdoor air damper stays open and 100% open as much of the time as possible. Because there are times, it's going to get cold enough when you can't leave that thing open all the way. Otherwise, you could, there's some, we call it a freeze stat inside of the unit, that if the air temperature inside the unit gets below 38 degrees, it actually shuts the fan off. And that's the last thing we want to do. So we've got to balance that and make sure that we can keep the unit running, but, you know, still provide heat to the classroom. Like I said, there's going to be windows open in the classrooms anyway, so.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, Mike, I'm going to ask you a quick question, hopefully, and then we'll let Gene. Oh, after, oh, okay. Well, you're with us for a while longer. So my question has to do with the change at the middle school. You said we're going to just pull in fresh air and we're not going to circulate, we're not going to recirculate any longer. Did I correctly capture that?
Yeah.
And do you have any idea, as we go into the winter, what we can expect for an increase in our heating bills by doing that versus recirculating?
Yeah, you know, I threw out a number, and I don't know where I threw this number in, but, you know, you might see, I'm just going to make up a number, maybe 15% increase, 20% increase in fuel usage. So hopefully, gas prices stay low. And because one of the things we're, you know, one of the things we do in addition to going to fresh air is each of these equipments has heat recovery units in it. So it's this big wheel, a big thick plastic wheel. And it's way up out of the building, the plastic wheel. The wheel is constantly rotating. And that warm part of the wheel rotates to the top half, and that's cold outside air coming in, and it picks up some of that heat. So we're recycling some of that, recovering some of that heat, reintroducing it to the building. Depending on how the sequence goes, we may not be able to use the heat wheels in the winter. So we may not see some of our, because these are the things that make the building as energy-efficient as it is. So if we can't use the heat wheels, too, then that's going to increase the cost incrementally as well.
Okay. And before we leave this topic, as we look at the chart at the beginning of this report, we can see fairly noticeably that Cove and North Beverly have numbers that are significantly, fairly, you know, visibly different than the other schools. And so I think I am going to ask you to speak for a minute on your planned upcoming improvements to those schools, including the fact that the money for those improvements is not coming out of the school budget?
Sure. Cove and North Beverly happen to be, I'm sure you all know, they're basically sister schools. If you look at them, they're, Cove and Hannah were built together under the same contract, on the same contractor. But Cove and North Beverly are basically the same design, the same layout, you know. And sometimes when I'm looking at the design plans, I have to remind myself what school I'm looking at because they're literally cookie cutters of each other. So that's why you see similar metrics between them because they're, all of our elementary schools were designed by the same architect, with the same engineers, using the same means and methods. So that's why they're all similar. But the classroom design of Cove and Hannah is actually identical. So that's why their numbers are what they are, but they're also pretty similar to each other. They're still well above the normal design standards that ASHRAI, which is the governing body for HVAC design, dictates for cubic feet per minute per occupant. And also, if you, in this COVID world, we have cut our occupant load basically in half. So that means even more fresh air per occupant. So we don't have any concerns about the amount of air that we're able to get into the schools. But that's, that's why those two are similar. And why exactly they're a little bit different? Well, the code did change, you know, code does change from time to time. And, you know, there was a, you know, basically, probably an eight or 10-year span where these schools were designed and built over. So, you know, there are building code changes throughout that. And the high school was a totally different building in energy efficiency codes than the middle school. So things changed quite a bit. Cove and Hannah, one of the things we have done over the last decade since the city became a green community, as designated by the Department of Energy, was we've applied for and gotten green community funding to retrofit the HVAC systems in our schools. That's something we started doing the first year, I think it was 2012. It was the first year we got a green community designation. We applied for a grant, and we have these six elementary buildings. And five of the six of them were designed in the same way, where the HVAC systems are controlled by air pressure, which is a very, very old-school way of doing things. Not a bad way, it's just a very, very old-school way of doing things. Goes back over 100 years. Briscoe uses the same system. One of the things about using pneumatics to control your building is, it's not very flexible. So typically, valves are open and closed, their dampers are open or closed. They're, you know, that's not, it's not that simplistic, but they basically are, you know, there's not much flexibility with it. There's not a lot with a pneumatic school. We're very much blind. So from an energy efficiency and from a control and recording standpoint, not ideal. So the first year, we got green community status. We applied for a grant to convert Air's Riles Side over, and we worked, we also got some national grid incentive money. And we did the conversion there, a couple hundred thousand dollars, to convert the, all of the equipment, all of the fans, all of the rooftop units, all of the exhaust fans, all the univents, over to what we call DDC, direct digital controls. So that allows us to actually go onto a computer and log into each piece of equipment and tell it to do things. And, you know, for instance, a year or two ago, I woke up really early because I was nervous because it was very, very cold, well below zero. And I looked at the high school, and I noticed that the principal's office was like 50 degrees. I'm like, uh-oh, that's not normal. The rooftop unit had tripped out on that freeze stat. So that's that safety device that keeps us from freezing hot water coils. Because we had sophisticated controls, I was able to go in and override and turn a fan on. I knew I could do that safely. Turn the fan on and get air circulating. And that was a, you know, that was a Band-Aid approach for that minute until we could get up and reset the freeze stat in the building and get things back to normal. But if it was pneumatics, A, I wouldn't even know what the temperature was, and B, I wouldn't be able to do anything about it unless I was there in the building. There's a lot of visibility. So we've been working for the last 10 years to upgrade each of the schools using a combination of green community money and national grid incentive money to remove the pneumatic controls that the schools were built with. And the only exception is that it's Centerville because that's the last school built, and that was built with DDC controls. We've done a number of upgrades to it, to upgrade the processors and things like that. So the other schools were done one at a time. Air's first, I think McEwen second, and North Beverly, and then Cove next. And so when we got to Cove, we applied for the same grant we always did. And we were, we had the most prolific green communities funding in the state because, at that time, only Boston, because of their size, got more money than we did, than the city of Beverly did. Because we were able to complete a project every single year, close it out, and apply for a grant the next year, which they had designed the system so that that shouldn't be possible because they give you the money. um, cause they give you the money too late in the year to really finish a project, but we worked very hard and we finished a project every year and applied for money the next year. So suddenly when it came to Cove, um, they ran out of money and they only gave us a portion of the money. So we went after the most, uh, important things to us. The ability to control the pneumatics that were left, um, and turn the building on and off as a whole. And then we, we tied in, we, we turned, we connected the boilers to a DDC system, the pumps, and all of the rooftop units for the admin, the nurse, the gym, um, the library, the computer center. And then the same thing happened to us the next year at Hannah. The, the state was not able to fund projects at the level they had previously funded them. Uh, we learned a little bit, cause we were surprised when they did this, did that to us at Cove. And when it came to Hannah, we, um, we were a little bit smarter at that time. We knew we were gonna get, um, not as much money as we would like. So we were able to squeeze a little bit more equipment into it, the gym, units, um, things like that. As we've been working through all of our commissioning this summer, I had asked, I had worked with the mayor and I said, um, while we can control Cove and Hannah, which still have a portion of the building on pneumatics, while we can control them sufficiently, um, I don't like the fact that I'm blind in the classrooms in terms of I can't, I don't have the finite, um, visibility of individual components on a day-to-day basis, on a real-time basis that I do in all the other schools. And, and would it be possible to use, we have some contingency funding left in the, in the city's portion of the CARES Act money. Would it be possible to use that in order to complete the conversions of those two schools? Uh, the mayor, um, contacted the, um, CARES administrator at the state and, um, he confirmed that we would be able to use the CARES Act money for that purpose. And so, and this is just all within the last week. Um, so we're proceeding with the project, um, to finish the conversion that we started there. We already have the backbone, we have the, the main brain, the main controller. It's a small little computer. We already have that in both schools, we already have control over the buildings. I can turn all the classrooms on and off, I just can't get down to that granular data level. What does that really mean? It makes, it makes our life a lot harder to manage the buildings, um, and, and make the granular control, um, finite changes to the, to the sequence of operation that we would like to do. Um, so we can survive the way it is, um, but life would be much better for myself and my staff if these two schools' conversions were completed. So over the next couple of months, uh, hopefully over the next six to eight weeks, we're gonna go in and, and finish the conversion that we had previously started and it's gonna be entirely funded through the CARES Act money. In, in addition, um, we did apply for a green community grant for this year. Um, the last green community grant we got, we, um, used for the city, citywide streetlights. That last grant put us into what they call the seven fifty club. We have, we've gotten seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funding and that means that any future green communities grants are less than a hundred thousand dollars, no matter what. We would typically get a quarter of a million plus out of green communities and from now on, we can only get a hundred thousand dollars, cause they've given us so much money. We've been too successful. Not a bad thing. So, um. So there's a combination of about sixty thousand dollars in green community money, uh, that we, we applied for a project to, to go to Cove and, and put the, uh, at specifically at Cove would be the cafeteria and gym, H and D is the heat and ventilation units for the caf and gym. And, um, and some of the fan coils and things like that. There's local, uh, like hallway heaters and things like that. Um, so, um, so the, uh, totally funded, you know, not school funding, not the school's portion of CARES Act funding even. This is contingency funding that we had on the school side and we've shuffled the decks a little bit on the school side because, um, you know, I'm, I'm very grateful that the mayor agreed with me that this is a priority. Um, because it'll, it'll just give us an even keel across the district. Every classroom is exactly the same and myself and my staff will have the visibility that we need, to, um, to make the same changes across the district.
Fantastic, Mr. Collins, thank you very much. Can you, um, very quickly speak to whether that work will be done when the children are not in the building? Especially given that our children are only in the building noon to, eight to noon? I almost said noon to four.
I, I would say pre-COVID. We have, as, as I said, we've spent the last ten years doing these projects. And, um, the, one of the last ones was North Beverly and I'll tell you, we actually did it, um, while the school was in session. Believe it or not, we were, the, the, you know, it's sort of, it's one of those things where, the kids got to know Pete, the electrician and, and once the principal, you know, we eased into it. We started early in the morning and we worked and we, you know, we did the, the stuff in the hallways, you know, ladders in the hallways and stuff like that. We did that before kids got in the room, before the, before the staff entered the building. But once, um, at some point we need to go into work, the univent. Takes about a day to convert a univent over, full workday. And it's not disruptive work, it's not loud, it's not dangerous. Um, and so, uh, just being honest, that we, we actually did it during class session. So Pete, the electrician, once the staff was comfortable, um, and only when they were comfortable, he worked in the classroom and, and, and did the conversions right there with the kids in the room. Um, that's how little disruption there is. Um, and he's also, uh, the guy doing the conversions happened to be just, you know, the nicest, kindest person, so it was, um, very easy to do. In this case, here the kids will be leaving at noon. Um, we recognize that staff will still be teaching in the, in the classrooms remotely. Um, so we will, we will start the same way. We will, um, do the, any loud, you know, moving ceiling tiles, things like that. We'll do that before staff enter the building. Um, we will retreat while the kids are in the building and, and we'll see what the tolerance level is and we, once the kids leave, we'll go back into the classroom. So we'll, we'll have to work with the staff to see, um, whether or not we can, A, keep them comfortable, cause we don't wanna put the staff in a position where they're not comfortable with us being in the room. And, and B, um, we don't, we don't wanna be in there making noise and banging things and running screw guns while they're trying to teach.
Fantastic.
We recognize that they're gonna be teaching.
Okay.
But.
Ms. Trocheck?
So we would likely, we would likely relocate a teacher if you were in their classroom, just for the sake of, uh, safety. So whatever classrooms, you, you could still access them at noon and we would just relocate that teacher or they would work remotely or something like that. We would work that out.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, we're very flexible and we're committed to.
I think we'll be able to figure that out.
All right, um, I think that, um, because there's no school money involved here, we do not technically need to take a vote. However, um, in the spirit of, I think this is great work to do and I would like our committee to, um, I would love to entertain a motion to, um, say we are in support of this work of using someone else's money to continue to improve, um, our school ventilation.
Second.
All right, I guess I made that motion? Okay, second by Mrs. Rob, by Mrs. Robinson. No, that's okay, great. Um, we have to do a roll call vote because Lindsay is, uh, hanging out at home. But Lindsay, um, now that it's, um, motioned and seconded, do you have a question?
I do. Are we voting, uh, with, with consideration for the fact that Dr. Trocheck just said that would happen when students and teachers weren't in the classroom from a safety perspective? I just wanna make sure that the vote is in consideration of that. But I fully support the vote for all the reasons you mentioned.
Yes, I think that, um, with the reassurances that we will minimize the classroom disruptions, um, uh, by working, uh, Mr. Collins working with Dr. Trocheck. All right, so, uh, any further discussion, any other questions? All right, we'll run around this room first. Mr. Manzo? Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
I love that you raised your hand, that's cute. Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Cuelo?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Lindsay?
Yes.
You notice I've stopped using your last name? Myself, yes. Okay, so, uh, there we go. We'll move on, hallelujah. Let's stop talking HVAC. Next item, please, Jean.
So they, um, you need to let me.
Yep, all right, there you go, you should be able to go. Oh, gosh.
Get back there, okay?
Are you good?
Sorry. Okay, so the next thing I have is the, uh, cleaning protocols. So, uh, the, um, commissioner of the DPS has, um, given us a daily school building cleaning, sanitizing and disinfecting schedule that is in, um, per the CDC. I have sent this out to the whole committee in the original, when I sent out the original documents. And, um, this is what we're planning on doing. Um, you know, we're going to be, are doing our regular cleaning and, um, deep cleaning. So I don't know if there's any questions, I don't think I need to read this whole thing. I mean, it's been out. The school committee has, uh, received this in other, uh, meetings and I do believe it's in our reopening plan. So I think that.
You want me to share that?
I guess if anybody has any specific questions.
Yeah, do you have questions on this particular protocol? Lindsay, I'm looking for your hand. Um, I have one question and it's, um, Dr. Trocheck, maybe it's more for you, relative to snack time in our elementary schools and where the snack time will be happening and if it, if it's not happening outdoors, how we're gonna handle.
Great question.
Okay, please go.
So, um, in the next slide, you'll see some pictures of snack time outside because we have some pictures of that from, um, from, well, actually, maybe not in the next one, but we have pictures of some.
Yep, it's the next, the next is outdoor.
However, there, there's, they're also, if, if it's inclement weather and for some reason we cannot go outside for snack, snack will be, um, either in the classroom. However, they will, um, they have come up with this very unique situation where there are color-coded dots on the floors in the classroom and so your desk might be color-coded red and Jean's would be green and Mr. Manzo's would be yellow and I would be red. And so you and I would have snack while, would, would, they would keep their masks on and you and I would eat our snack. And then the yellow group would, oh, would have, we'd put our masks back on, the yellow group would eat their snacks. They, we'd put our masks on. So the teachers have figured out a way so that if they need to, um, do a snack in the classroom, that's how they would, that's how they would accomplish it. So, um, very innovative and, and, um, very efficient.
So not using the cafeterias? No transfer down?
Cafeterias will be used for breakfast, uh, for, so breakfast and lunch, well, we're gonna get that later too. Chris, uh, I think Jean's gonna talk a little bit about that, but our current plan is that we will be sending lunch home every day along with breakfast for the next day. But breakfast will still be available for someone if they haven't had breakfast and that will be in the cafeteria and that's the only thing we'll be serving in the cafeteria. That doesn't preclude a class from going to the cafeteria to do that, but I believe that we have spaces that are being shared with the Y for our after-school program as well and there's multiple cleanings that need to happen in between. So I think that the preferable way is to do it in the classroom with that rotating schedule.
Fantastic, thank you. Any other questions before I let Jean move on? Giddy up.
Okay, thank you, Mike. You're done.
Uh, thank you. Um, I, when I, just one last thing, um, the work of the committee, the school committee and the subcommittees is, is not, uh, and it does not go underappreciated by me, um, unappreciated by me. Um, so thank you all for volunteering your time in this nutty, nutty time. It's, it's incredibly hard work and, and, um, I don't envy you in a, in a lot of ways, but, uh, I appreciate you guys doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
So the next, um, item, uh, is that, um, it was asked on what we're doing for outdoor space. So we have some, um, pictures here of some things that we are doing. We have, um, some tents set up, I believe that was at Ayers. Dr. Trocheck?
So those are, there's a couple of pictures here from the outdoor spaces at Ayers. Um, and the schools have kind of gone about their work of creating outdoor spaces in a couple of different ways. A couple of the schools took advantage of the tree stumps that were available for us. Uh, we're very grateful to one of the parents from the Ayers School, who, I think it's Mayor Tree, that, um, was able to donate some of those stumps. Um, and the stumps have been set up in actual classroom spaces in sets of sixteen for the classrooms to use. Snack, today I was at the Ayers School, actually I was at all the schools and snack takes place outside normally, that's the normal function and the children are seated, they take their masks off and they have their snacks outside. They then put their sn, masks back on for recess and then they have their recess. So, um, you see a picture of little orange buckets from Home Depot. That's also, um, each student in the school, uh, in the district, in the elementary classes and the preschool has a bucket that's their own, they can carry outside. So if they, if they were not going to a space that was already, um, utilized with tree stumps, they have the orange buckets that they can use as seating outside. Um, they also use that to carry their materials in and out, um, at some of the schools. So, um, various ways, but when they get outside, they are seated down at, um, six-foot distance and they stay seated while they eat their snack and then that, when they finish their snack, they put their masks back on. So that's been, um, really a, a great way for us to do it for snacks. Outdoor learning spaces, I was at, um, North Beverly today and there was a class out on the tarp. They, they use, they're using tarps in their buckets and the teacher was out with the whiteboard and running a morning meeting outside. So a lot of the things that we were concerned about in the forward-facing rows seating in the classrooms, we've really found a way to accomplish them outside in our outside spaces. So, uh, we're very lucky and, and, um, it's actually been a real silver lining for us to discover this kind of new way of thinking about learn anywhere and what that means to us, so.
And that bottom middle picture is at the McEwen School.
Oh, yeah. The beds, so the, the preschool, um, has ordered a number of, um, their garden beds. Their raised garden beds and they're utilizing them, um, in some ways as a wonderful science project for the preschoolers and in other ways as some nice barricades to kind of, um, mark off spaces for students to be so that, it limits the commingling, um, that's going on for the preschool classrooms as well.
So that's all we have for outdoor learning, if there's any other questions? The next item I have is the food service.
I just wanted to ask about the, um, use of outdoor space at the middle and high school.
Yep, so the middle and high school, uh, is, is thinking it in a similar way, um, in terms of that. So remember, we built our middle school purposefully with outdoor spaces. So there are actually three basic outdoor classrooms that were already built into the open learning center area out front. Uh, Mr. Manzo is well aware of that. Um, and also the spaces that are in between the neighborhoods. So in between each neighborhood, there's a patio area and some grassy area. So those are the spaces that will be utilized for that. I'm not sure, I don't think they have buckets, I'm not sure what, how they're traveling and what they're sitting on, but, um, they probably have a, you know, a middle school plan. And likewise at the high school, Mrs. Taylor's identified learning spaces and they're, um, available for classrooms to use at the high school when the hybrid model begins.
I'm, I'm wishing to go backwards, even though we let Mr. Collins leave and ask a question, you don't have to move your slide back, but relative to the extra new cleaning protocols, and I love that we're eating snack either in our own classroom or outside because I was thinking, how are we going to clean the cafeteria in between each group of people eating snacks?
Right.
But the question is, um, with all the extra cleaning protocols, did we hire additional maintenance staff?
So I, I asked, uh, that specific question and we have not yet hired it. We're monitoring whether we need it. Remember that students are out at noon, um, and so that's a much earlier day, which leaves a lot more time for cleaning afterwards and a lot less use of some of the spaces. We don't, we're not serving lunch, so there's no need to be cleaning cafeterias or, um, some of the other common spaces that we have, locker rooms and some of the things that took up the time. So Mr. Collins and I are working together and we're monitoring it and he and Jean and I will have a conversation if and when we ever need to.
I'm most concerned.
As, as needed, we would add it.
And I just wanna add that, um, Mr. Collins did mention that a, a lot of the duties for the custodians is to be in the, in the cafeteria with the lunches being served and now that they're not going to be served, that that's time that they can clean.
Right, I'm just looking at this list, right? And so for instance, um, the bathroom, cleaning the bathrooms at the interval.
Just on a regular basis, yeah.
Cleaning the bathrooms, that was almost, feels like a full-time job.
Except for that, well, yes, and, yes and no in that hour. Remember, um, we only have a third, we'll only, and, and again, we're gonna see and, and we'll certainly monitor it over when the, when the high school students return and the, when the, they haven't even come back yet in some of the buildings. So if it's something that we need to do, but the bathrooms are monitored and only one person is allowed in the bathroom at a time and so it's amazing how clean they stay when only one person can go in there at a time. And so the cleaning process of every two or three hours, it's on a schedule and it, you know, I mean, he's confident that we can do it and if not, we'll add staff. So we don't, we don't need to add staff until we know we need to add staff, I guess is the real answer. And as soon as we do, we will.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, so, um, am I okay to go off of outdoor space? Uh, the next thing I have is a food service update and, um, we are glad to hear that on August thirty-first, the USDA approved the universal free waiver for all students until December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, um, or until the funds run out. Government talk. Uh, what does that mean? That all Beverly students? That all Beverly students receive free meals regardless of the benefit? As Dr. Shirochek has spoken earlier, K through four students will receive a bagged lunch at dismissal, and in the bag will be breakfast for the next day for them to eat at home. Breakfast will be available for students that have been absent the day before. Beverly, the middle school and the high school students will have breakfast offered daily and will receive lunch at dismissal, and will have a breakfast in it for the next day, just like the elementary. All remote learners can pick up meals daily at Beverly High School from 10:30 to 11:30. They will receive one breakfast and one lunch per child. Under the waiver, we can distribute weekend meals. All families that come to the high school on Friday will receive three breakfasts and three lunches. So therefore, the, one of those lunches, a breakfast, is going to be planned for Monday, so it would not be a hot sandwich lunch, breakfast, obviously. Christina has given me the information on the fresh products, prudo, produce, oh my God, produce box program has been extended, and the boxes will be distributed on, at the high school on Thursdays. We get 56 boxes weekly to distribute, and what she found out recently is they're now going to be combination produce, dairy and meats. And we're kind of laughing on how heavy these boxes are going to be, but a lot of our families are taking advantage of this, and this is the USDA and Costa is the organization. So that's how we're doing it. So right now, children are, all children are free until December 30th.
Fantastic. Do we have any information about how, I'm going to look to you because I know you help distribute the food, how somebody could get one of those produce boxes, especially now that it's going to be including dairy and meat?
So I believe what happens is if, you know, it's first come, first served on Thursdays at the high school. Kimmy, I'm not sure if you know anymore, because I know you picked up some for some families.
Yes, during the spring and the summer, I picked up and dropped off for some families. So I was able to pick up at 10:00, 10:15 in the morning before the big rush would come, before we got the new update saying that it was extended. I wasn't going to be able to pick them up anymore because everyone had to put their PIN numbers in.
Right.
Or know their student and grade. I haven't talked to Christina yet since this, but I believe I would still be able to pick up if I had the opportunity to for the children.
So I would assume the best thing to do is to reach out to Christina Lille, our food service director, if there's families that are looking for this.
I know that school's in session, though, so there won't be any delivery options like there was to the park, I don't believe.
Right.
Or by bus as there was before.
Right.
So I believe that all, the produce boxes are on Thursday mornings, and so that's when it would be to the first 56 people that were interested in getting them on Thursday.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask a question?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. So how will this be publicized? Just because I would, like, I think this is just an amazing thing that we're doing. I would hate to see any of this go to waste.
So we have been doing the produce boxes all summer, and it was advertised when Christina sent out her connect eds. She is planning on sending out another connect ed probably tomorrow evening to just talk about the free lunch and that it is available. We were a little, I'm going to just say disappointed today that there was a lot of meals left over. So we had some schools that had a lot of meals, bagged lunches going, so we want to send out another blast to just let people know that it is available, and I'll make sure that she talks about the produce boxes at that time also. We're just kind of hoping that just being the first day of school, people really weren't sure what's going on and, you know, a lot of times when they're going to be going home to eat, you know, the meals are there. They are hot sandwiches and cold sandwiches, and that's the one thing is that where our disappointment was, there was a lot of food that we had to throw away because you can't hold it over for the next day.
So to piggyback on hers, I know, I believe that part of the problem is, well, Christina, she did send out the emails. We got the emails. My children each got the email in their emails. We got the phone calls as well. But as before, there's transportation issues for some families. There's some families that may have chosen the Remote Learning Academy but live on the other side of Beverly and can't get to the schools to be able to pick up. Like with Gloucester Crossing, there was a drop-off for some of the families that don't have transportation as well.
Right, so the one thing is we will not be able to make any deliveries. We're having, you know, we're only transporting the children that are mandated for a reason because that's what we have the capacity to do. So we, we did have a family that reached out to Christina this week, and actually, the teacher is going to help the family and deliver once a week. So if there are some families, I would say have them reach out to Christina, but we can do what we can do, but we have limited staff, so it's, we can't just be delivering.
Maybe even reach out to the PTOs to see if, well, I mean, I just, I'm just trying to be creative and.
Yeah, I would say that if there's any families that you know of, then, you know, reach out to the principal and Christina, and that's where, you know, we can see what we can do and brainstorm together.
Right. Thank you so much.
I would say, Ms. Robinson, in addition to those 56 produce boxes, when this program was initially not going to continue, we weren't going to continue, we weren't going to be able to continue to feed, Dr. Shirochek got a call from a, from a community member that said, you know, how can my organization fill this spot and provide these meals? Can we still bring them and use the school's distribution mechanism, which was basically the high school, right? Here's our pickup. So, you know, every night of the week, if you're hungry, you can get a meal in the city of Beverly. And there are a whole bunch of different community organizations that do that, and that would be above and beyond and separate from the food pantry at Beverly Bootstraps. So we are incredibly fortunate to have different organizations that are stepping up and volunteers that are doing that every night of the week. And in addition, I think that if we find that we have more than 56 families, the organization that came to you could step up and bring in some more food.
And I know that Christina was in touch with them, so she reached out to them, so.
Fantastic.
Do I have any more questions on?
Mr.
Manzo. Just one, so you've got the staff in the cafeteria to produce several thousand meals a day like this?
Yes, so I don't, I have those numbers right off the top of my head, but yes, they, you know, our staff is working full, and they are being able to provide, and Kimmy probably can talk a little bit about it because she was actually there picking up meals for other families, and it was quite a distribution, I should say.
Absolutely.
On average, weekly, I picked up for anywhere from three to seven families that had transportation issues and that were at a food disadvantage. Speaking with one of the workers that worked in the kitchen at the high school over the summer, I believe they said they made about 18 meals with just five workers.
Well, we're talking about every kid gets a, gets breakfast and lunch every day.
Yep, every, yeah, so we make them.
But that's, that's 4,000-something meals.
Well, during the summertime, they only distributed the meals on Tuesdays and Fridays, and each child would get three lunches and three breakfasts to hold them to the next pickup.
So what the thing is, Mr. Manzo, is that not everybody does participate in this. So some people, they're going to have their own, but I did tell Christina that she didn't have to come online. I told her I'd call her if I had any questions, but, I mean, that is something that we can find out, but the numbers were great and, you know.
They have the capacity to do that.
That's fantastic, yeah.
It's just, I think that the trick is balancing, you don't want to throw away food, you don't want to, you know, prepare too much for the distribution for that day. And so the real balancing act has been, you know, how much should we make? How much will go out the door? And they're working on some head, you know, some lunch counts, but lunch counts are tricky too because we would just assume everybody, you know, that needs one can just grab it on the way out the door. So they're working at, you know, working out the kinks on some of it.
That's just fantastic, yeah.
Yeah, we have great capacity, though.
It is. Yes, Kimmy?
I know Christina is not on tonight, but something to bring up to her is I think it would be easier if they could do the two days a week pickup, like on Tuesdays and Fridays again, for the children that are in Remote Learning Academy. It might make it easier for the parents that have to work while the children are at home.
Good suggestion.
Any other questions? No? Okay. So I'm going to go on, so I really have just one more kind of item on here, and then we can get into our thing. I just want to be cognitive of our time. I want to make sure that the things that I need you to vote on are addressed when we get into the reporting. So the next thing I have to talk about is the FY21 additional positions. During, as you know, during the FY21 budget process, we increased 6.5 positions that were added to the budget with the appropriated funding from the appropriated budget. It was necessary to increase the total FTE count with the, with an additional 20.5 positions for the Remote Learning Academy. Funding for these positions will come partially from the COVID Relief Fund, CVRF grant that we talked about at the very beginning of the meeting, and savings from not filling other positions, and then there may be additional hiring savings where, as you recall, when we built our budget, we based it on a certain dollar amount for each teaching position, and we were able to hire some paraprofessionals that had teaching licenses, which would have been hired at bachelor's step one. So we have some savings there. And so talking about the remote learning positions added, Dr. Shirochek knows this stuff inside out, but what I'll tell you is the elementary has 20 positions, the middle school has four, and the high school has three positions that were added. We do have some staff that were in the classroom or in another area that are teaching in the remote. I probably should just let you talk.
Okay, I'm happy to do it. So basically, there were, we created 17 elementary positions for remote learning. There are 16 sections plus one special education teacher. But we utilized a lot of staff that we had and were able to kind of offer the opportunity for some of our paras who were newly certified. We used only licensed paras but elevated paras to teaching positions, but we did not replace those paras so that if it was a, here's an example, if it's $43,000 for a long-term sub, we already budgeted $20,000 for the para position. So in essence, we were capturing that money back and we have it at a lower cost. So we did, we were able to do that. In many of our remote learning positions, our veteran teachers who chose to teach remotely, we were able to accommodate all of our requests for teachers who wanted to work remotely in that regard. And so the long-term sub is in the classroom in person, and the, a teacher who requested to work remotely is able to work remotely in the Remote Learning Academy. In addition, there were two nurses that were added also for those FTEs. So we hired two additional nurses so that we have a total of 7.5 teachers on the elementary so that there's 1.5 at every elementary school, so that there's always an opportunity for an additional nurse should we, a need arise at that building, so.
Is it just a coincidence that the six and a half positions that were not filled equals the six and a half positions that were originally approved?
Yes, it is just a coincidence. So by not filled, I'll give you an example. There may have been a position at an elementary school. Heather Colton was working as a math specialist in the Cove Elementary School. She is teaching first grade in the Remote Learning Academy. So we moved her position to the Remote Learning Academy. She's continuing to do support for the math in the ST Math Program that she was supporting before, but she's teaching remotely for the first grade, so we didn't have to refill that position. So those were really, that worked well when we didn't have to replace. We had a music position at Hannah that we didn't fill because we are doing asynchronous music, and so they're working together across the district. So at this point, that position will go back to the Hannah position should we open full in-person, but at this time, we didn't need to fill it. So we utilized some of those opportunities, and it is just a coincidence that it's 6.5.
I think it's important to add, Dr. Shirochek, that what you just said that is that anybody that was pulled out into the remote learning positions, their positions are still going to be where they were previously, and we'll write that in their letters of transfer to the Remote Learning Academy, that they will go back to the position they held at the end of last year.
Go ahead, Ms. Robinson.
Thank you. And I know it's difficult to create these schedules, obviously, but just how, are you feeling it's easy to be equitable, like with, with the number of classes teachers are teaching and the number of students?
We're following the contract.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just curious because.
So, no, we're very much balancing that. That's their, the, and you'll see when we do, when you see the enrollments, the enrollments in the Remote Learning Academy are around 21 or 22. In-person is 16 because that's the spacing. Is that what you mean?
No, I just meant, just in general, I would think it'd be just like some of the global apps, or is it more?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're, everybody's being utilized to their full capacity, so.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, Lindsay, did I see your hand up?
Yes, please, thank you. Dr. Shirochek, so you mentioned like Hannah doesn't have a music teacher, and everybody's working to.
Go ahead.
No, that's okay, I'm sorry, I interrupted you. So, and you also mentioned everybody's working to their full capacity. Just to piggyback on the last question a little bit, are like all the specialists at North Beverly serving North Beverly population, all the service, and then how does that vary? Like if you have a remote student, might you have, I'm thinking about like sort of the idea and the discussion that we had about the Remote Learning Academies still being connected to their home school. Are Remote Learning Academy students, I mean, it seems like since they're, it's a group made up of students from all different schools, you might have a STEAM teacher from this school, a music teacher from this school, and art teacher from this school. Or is it done by grade? Like kindergarten, you get the Hannah specialist, Centerville, you get the fourth grade.
No, it's done by, the specialists are all working collaboratively. So all the music teachers are working together. They divided it up the grade, and so the Ayers teacher would be providing all of the asynchronous across the whole district for grades K and 1. And, you know, so if there are, if there are five teachers, they would each do a grade level. If there's four teachers, they would divvy up the grades that way. And so there's no, they're, of course, they're based in their home school, but in terms of delivering the asynchronous expressive arts that are going on right now, it's district-wide. So that when you create a lesson, you create it for the whole district. So the music, you access the same music, whether you're in Remote Learning Academy or in-person, and it's all accessed in the afternoon through that asynchronous model, and it's designed for, so we're kind of trying to maximize instead of having every music teacher create second grade lessons in each building, one teacher's creating all the second grade lessons for the whole district. And we do that in music and art and PE as well as in STEM.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the positions?
So my next slide is going to be, if we have any questions, I'll open that. But my next slide here is what is my, what are our next steps? So the approval of the additional positions, and then I have to do FY21 budget transfers. I will be bringing those to the next meeting. If the committee wanted to approve the positions, and then it goes to the full committee, but to let you know that I am going to be finding the funds within the budget and/or within the COVID funding as I spoke back at the beginning of this meeting. But those are the next steps. If we, if the committee would like to have those, both those items go to the next meeting, they can. As you know, usually the first meeting, I come with any transfers I need for FY21, but I'm, I have not been able to get that done until next meeting.
Right, but technically, these positions have already been added and we're already teaching with them, and we're confident that the money is there somewhere, and actually, we're a little bit of a ordering-wise, we're going to look at our finances, our finances next, and there are some questions around that. So it's, it's almost just a matter of formality.
Yes, if it's a formality, if we could get the approval of the positions, and then I will be bringing the transfers at the next meeting to show you how that was funded.
How we'll actually pay for them.
Yes.
All right, I would entertain a motion to approve these additional positions to run our school system this year.
A second. I'll make a motion.
Fantastic, that's okay. So a motion by Mrs. Robinson and a second by Ms. Coelho.
We'll learn.
Is there any further discussion based on the fact that we've kind of already discussed this? Any further discussion? I'm looking at Zoom before I look around the room. All right, we need to do a roll call vote. Lindsay, we'll start with you. I'm looking at Zoom before I look around the room. All right, we need to do a roll call vote. Lindsay, we'll start with you.
Yes.
Ms. Coelho?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Manzo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. That passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. My next thing is questions, but I'm going to go into the financials.
Fantastic.
So you can, I don't know how to stop sharing.
Okay.
Exit. Oh, stop sharing, I see it. Okay, good.
And do you want me to share something, my friend?
So if you would like to, I'm just, I want to get to the budget transfers is what I'm really going to have you bring up. What I'll just let, mention to the committee is that you receive two year-to-date budget reports. On mine, I, you know, wrote FY20, but I didn't do it before I scanned it to you. So the first line in the upper left-hand column will say 42020 for 202099. That is going to be how we ended our, our accounting at the end of last year. And if you look at the last page of that, you'll see available budget 281,0028341, and that's the amount that we were able to return to the city, back to the general fund. So we didn't spend all of our money last year. That was our intent. I was telling the mayor and Bryant all along that I thought the number was going to be between 20250. It ended up being 283,000. So Ms. Visnick is bringing it up, and oops, sorry, it goes upside down because of the way I scanned it. Sorry. So right there, that, so it's on page 39, the last number in the column all the way to the right. That is the amount that we were able to return to the city.
Two, so Jean, Jean, I see 281, 283. Okay, I got it, 41.
So that's the amount. And so pretty much that is what I just wanted to talk about in FY20. And then I need to have the committee approve the end-of-year transfers that I had to make in order to have a balanced budget in all the lines and leaving the 281, 283 for the city to take.
And which?
So the next thing I have is journal entry number 932. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve journal, journal entry number 932 for the end-of-year FY20 transfers. And this was various salary accounts. So just to remind the committee, if I can transfer between, within a cost center, I do not need to bring that to the committee for a vote. If I cannot do that and I need to cross cost centers, then I do come to the committee for a vote. So this one here was, it's various accounts. There is not a total. It's, it's various. So I'm looking for approval of journal entry number 932.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Manzo. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Are there any questions about this set of transfers? Lindsay, is your hand up? Sorry, or are you just holding your head?
No, sorry, I'm good. No, sorry.
All right, any questions in the room? All right, there's motion on the table. Let's vote. We're going to go, we're just going to go in the same order again. Lindsay?
Yes.
Ms. Coelho?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Manzo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Next budget transfer, Jean?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
I guess for the, for the, as far as your vote is, do you want us to combine the three in one vote? I mean, they've already been done, so it's really just formality. So what we'd be looking for is a motion to approve journal entries number 1022, 1123, and 1171. And I can tell you, the first one that I spoke about is, talks about facilities and expense accounts. The second one is talking about, again, various salary accounts. And the last one was talking about buildings and grounds and other instructional costs. So I'm thinking we should have, just do one vote the rest of them.
That would be fantastic, especially considering the time.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve these transfers?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. A second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Coelho. Our floor is open for discussion. Mr. Manzo?
I just have one question on 1123.
Sure, let me see.
Transfer for drivers, 109,000, is that, is that a usual thing that we've, like one and a half times the budget was?
Good eye, Mr. Manzo. So as you know, what I need to do is to ensure that our revolving accounts have funds. So therefore, at the end of the year, as you know, I, we gave the city, returned to the city 283,000. What I did was I made sure that our revolving funds were able to have enough funds in them to cover the costs of what we usually have for a budget offset in the next fiscal year. So generally speaking, I've already, I had already transferred the driver salaries out to the revolving account, but I wanted to ensure that if we're not going to be charging, which at this point, we are not charging because we're only doing mandated, I still need those funds to pay the staff. So that is why I did that.
And so we saw similar big numbers, and this is regular transportation, also special ed transportation?
Yes, yep.
And the teaching sixth, is that tied to service? Is that what?
Yes.
So it's really the same answer to those?
Same answer, pretty much, yes, is that if I had, I had funding, I wanted to make sure that our revolving accounts were fluid for FY21, so we didn't have any financial problems in FY21.
That, which was another question of mine, was that how the revolving accounts are doing, and you're maintaining them?
Yes. I started off a balance as equal to or greater than what our budget offset was, just in case there was an issue where we weren't going to be charging. So as you know, we, the kindergarten revolving, we are not having a kindergarten, full-day kindergarten fee this year, so I had to make sure that I had the funds in that account to do the offset that we planned for FY21.
Thank you.
All right, there's motion on the table. There's a second. Any further questions? All right, our vote. Lindsay?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Manzo?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Coelho?
Yes.
Myself, yes. That passes unanimously.
The next thing that I would like you to bring up is the FY21 revenues report.
You hold it up like that. It's funny, I'm looking at, like, can you see my screen? B and G.
I think it just says like, it looks like the bottom item, revenue report.
Thank you.
So this is our revenue report for the beginning of this fiscal year. So our current budget for FY21 is 62,417,942. Our school choice estimate is 586,557. Once we get those numbers, as I say each year, they look at the numbers on the October 1st report, and then we'll make some kind of change, whether it's positive or negative. We'll be filling in the third column. Circuit breaker revenue is our budget offset. So these numbers are the amounts that we have set in our budget, are set in our budget as an offset. Some of them will come in higher and lower depending upon the case. Circuit breaker revenue, that is the funds that we receive for us, for the state's share for out-of-district placements, and what it is a criteria that they have to meet. Special education tuition, so as you know, Bethany Spolansky has brought in some students back into the district, and we have other districts paying us, so that is our estimate for this year. The non-tuition, the non-resident tuition service, we have an $88,000 offset. That usually goes to the teach-six salaries that Mr. Manzo had mentioned. As you'll notice, in the next column, I have 88,000. What that's telling you is I am not planning on any service students, but because I have an offset, I have already made sure that I have a carryover. Transportation revolving is the 218.6. Building rental is 320. I'm anticipating that I needed to have at least 170,000. We are still going to be receiving funds because the YMCA program is, after-school program is a tuition base. They pay us based on the number of students. So I am still planning on them paying us a certain dollar amount, which is the 150 that you see over there. I am not planning on at this moment that we would be renting out our building. I think we have enough problems with just taking care of ourselves. Preschool revolving, 45881. Kindergarten revolving, there's the 200,000, and you see that I already have it in the, in the carryover. User fees for the athletics, that is an estimate that we use each year, 209,748. We'll be looking at that now that we've heard what are we going to be doing. And so that number may be adjusted, but what I have to look at, two items, is are we going to have the expense, you know, and the loss of revenue and what that entails. And the final thing is the elementary strings, the 3349, 415. And that is not a fee-based program, and I forgot to tell Barbie Aiken to put 33418, 415 in the second column. I already have that in.
Fantastic.
And as you can see, as far as how much we've received in, not much right as of this month. So we'll be adjusting this each month.
So my?
But do we really think you're going to be collecting a lot in any of these categories?
Yes.
Are you charging for transportation?
No.
No, so transportation, I do have those funds available, but I'm not sure. I don't know, I don't want to say we're not, because if we are able to open it up, we will be able to. If we are going to open up transportation to non-mandated, there will be a fee.
Right, so I guess, do you, do you want to say, this is a fantastic opening for you, to try to say in your own words what I asked you about yesterday and what was communicated relative to potentially opening up transportation to non-mandated?
So currently, we are only committed to transporting students K to 6 that are two miles and out, and special education students. So we have very strict compliance rules around transportation in terms of how, the distancing that we have to have on the buses, the assigned seating charts that we need to have, all of the things that we need to do. And we know that our capacity is cut almost by a third in our ability to transport. So we, we opened up registrations for students K to 6 who are actually beginning to attend tomorrow through 6. And today, today they began and tomorrow for 5 and 6. We are setting up the routes, and we're looking at the students that have registered. We're filling the buses with all of those students. We will then have sort of a phase two where, and I think the very next thing that we're going to look at is our students that are in 7 and 8 that are two miles out because they also, the routes are already established. I will say that we do have, I think, three routes that we maintained within two miles that were for safety reasons. They're the same routes that were identified in the past, so of families that had, that were needing transportation because they either had to cross a highway or walk on a highway. So we kept those routes in place. And we will be, we're going to open them as they come, but we're, we need to first settle and make sure that we have enough seats for the kids that are mandated and that we are transporting, and then we'll begin. So, you know, parents of 7th and 8th graders have been reaching out. I understand. It makes good sense to me that siblings might want to ride together on a bus. We first have to make sure we have the seats for the kids we have, and then we'll be opening up those 7th and 8th graders. That they would incur a fee if, in fact, parents were opting for it because they're not mandated, and they would have, that would have always been the case.
And of course, if they have financial hardship, they can always apply for a scholarship.
Scholarships, of course. So, so that's the situation right now with the buzzing. And again, I ask in advance and thank you for your patience as we kind of work through it. It's a very complicated system this year in terms of pre-registering and the seating that we have to do and all of that. So we are working really hard and we'll be opening them up. I, kudos, beyond kudos, to the Transportation Department for the work that they've done so far and that they continue to do. So that's where we're at right now.
Right, so I have a quick question for you, Jean. These, these numbers, this budget appears to be the same number as we approved at the end of last year, but yet we just voted to add a whole bunch of positions. So.
So remember, those positions you added, I am telling you, is going to be found within this budget and/or it's going to be in the COVID grant, which is not part of this.
That's my question, right? So will this budget be updated to reflect the COVID grant spending? Any of those numbers, any of those additional expenses? So all of the additional expenses you showed us earlier, out of the Ursa?
Yep.
Did I say that one right? Out of the CVR, out of the CARES, all, those will never quote-unquote hit this?
Never this. This here only talks about your city appropriated budget. So I will be giving you a grant report, so you're going to be, you're going to be accepting some grants in a few minutes, and that would be a separate. When I did the report this month for the, to remember in the, last year I talked about SO1 reports, and then SO2 is the state and the federal. So I don't have those for this month, but next month I will be bringing those. But that's where those reports are. This revenue thing is only that. I can probably add a section to our revenues as, you know, grants and how much we've received in. That's something that we could do, but right now, let's just get moving.
Okay, I just want to make sure that this is never going to reflect that. So this is only, this will remain only the appropriated budget, and all of our other spins will be reported separately.
Funding from the city, and then that would be reflected here.
Okay, where you want to go next?
Okay, so the next thing I have is the year-to-date report for, it says September. You're right about one right there. So this, it looks at the same report, but as you can see in the left-hand column, it says 42021, period 99. So this is what this year, that's this year's budget. So the difference between the two reports is where Ms. Visnick is highlighting. So pretty much, I just want to say that this is where the budget is when we first voted the budget. So a couple of things have happened that we, we don't see yet. So as you can see in the second column, there is no numbers in there. However, what's going to fall into that category is any transfers that we make and any purchase orders that were on the first report as encumbered but not spent yet will fall into that category. So I would just say that at this point of time, at the beginning of the school year, it's difficult to see everything because if a purchase order has rolled over, or the purchase order hasn't rolled over yet, however, under the expended column, I may have it. So once the city does, they did a soft roll right now, and then they'll do the complete rollover, which we usually see in my October or my November report based on when they find, when they do the final steps of their rollover. So I'm just going to say the best thing to do at this point, this is just something to be familiar with. What we have to do right now is Debbie Tina in my payroll department has already moved people up the steps, but I have not moved the budgets to the, correct that. So my task for this month is to move people, move people up their steps and do all that shifting that Dr. Shrocheck was talking about, that somebody that was at Ayers is now going to be in another area. I will let you know that where the new account number is, is under, oh, goodness gracious. It's, it's not showing up on here yet because I don't have the budget in there. But under the OT, on page 31, we have OT 075. There is going to be a new category that's going to come in that's going to talk about Remote Learning Academy. So that's where, that's where I put the Remote Learning Academy. Instead of in the, each individual schools, we created one account that they're going to be there. So I have, I have more that I'll talk about next month on this.
Hmm? I put an arrow. It's going to go right about there, right?
There you go, there you go. Perfect. Oh, yeah, I can see it here. So that's where, we will see that. And then, because, you know, we've already started our first payroll. So generally, each month, you'd be looking at how much have we spent year-to-date, and it's just not, people have moved, but we haven't moved the budget yet, so we'll be fixing that. And we still do have under the reserve for negotiations, you were just on that page.
I know, I just moved.
OT 118 on page 31. Just up a little bit. And that's where the, remember, we have, we put in for our increases, our steps and our columns. So I will be taking from that area and moving it into all the steps wherever those people stepped. And the column moves are usually done in October. and we're hoping that we're going to be able to get those done by the end of October versus the beginning of October because there's just been so much movement going on. We haven't been able to vet the, the column moves, see, check people's transcripts to make sure. So I would just ask the committee that this is something to look at, something to compare when we talk next month. You'll see a lot of changes when I do those transfers, which I will be bringing forward because I'll be going from one cost center to another.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody has any questions, but it's kind of really too early to see that.
No transfers this month?
No transfers this month. Yep, I had that on there just in case I was able to do the step, but I was not able to do that.
Here comes my favorite part.
So the next thing I have is the grant acceptance. So the Gifts for Schools, we didn't have any Gifts for Schools this particular month, but I do have the grants that I'm asking for. So I think for the committee, let's vote the DESE grants and then separately, the Beverly Ed Foundation. There was one additional grant that came in that we didn't report at the end of last year. So the DESE grants that we've received, these are allocation grants that we get a certain allocation amount. So I'm asking you to vote the allocation amounts. Some of these grants have just been submitted, and they're going, they're in the approval process, but the amount of money will not change because they give us our allocation. So I'm looking for an approval of $3,940,235.
Who wants to make that happy motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mrs. Robinson and Ms. Quelo. Are there any questions on the table relative to accepting this $3,940,235 in grant funds?
So just to clarify, the top two, the CVRF and the SO grants, those are, one time, we're in a bad place, special things.
Yep.
Which is like a million and a half of this.
Yes.
And it needs to be spent by December 31st.
On the 102.
And the rest are things that we usually get.
The SO1 goes, yeah. And the other ones are normal, the Title II, Title III. The rest of them are normal allocation grants, yes.
All right, there's a motion on the table, and I like to say, who would ever say no to accepting money? We'll go around this way. Ms. Quelo?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Manzo?
Yes.
Ms. Lindsey?
Yes.
Myself, yes. That passes unanimously.
And then the next thing I would ask is the committee to approve the Beverly Ed Foundation grant. It's on that same page. And for the one-to-one laptop program of $1,925, we approved all of the grants at the end of June that they presented, and we missed this one, or it came in after that date. So I'm looking for that to be approved.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Quelo. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Any discussion on this one? All right, we're going to go around the table the other way. Ms. Lindsey?
Yes.
Mr. Manzo?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Quelo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. That passes unanimously.
And the final, next and final thing that I would like you to bring up is, it's called non-union hourly, right there?
Yep.
Perfect. So each, every three years, I come into the committee to look for increases in non-union hourly rates based on, so these people are not, are not, they're not individual contracted people, and they are not part of a, one of our union groups. So these people are lunch monitors, cafeteria subs, crossing guards, custodian subs, clerical subs, and retired clerical subs. And so generally speaking, I come in and ask for an increase, and I, in the last few years, I've been coming in and asking for an amount for three years, so that I don't have to come every year and ask you for an increase. What I'm going to tell you here is that the lunchroom monitors and cafeteria subs currently are at $12.73. And somebody will ask me, what is the, the minimum wage? And I will tell you, it's more than that. So what I have done here is have calculated out, what is the minimum wages going to be? Currently, it's $12.75. Next year, it's going to be $14.25. And in FY '23, it's going to be 15. So I've taken the wisdom to say, okay, let's make sure that we're at minimum wage, so we're not worried about that each year. So, so it is a larger increase at this time for that first year because on a minimum wage, we're not quite dramatically. And so, and it changes on January. So even though minimum wage right now is $12.75, it's going to be, I think it's $13.25 or something like that. And then it's going to be $14.25. So what I'm looking for is, I did, so I looked at that one from $13.50 to $14.25 to 15. And we'll have to make sure that we have the funding for the subsequent years to cover those costs. Crossing guards, what I did was, I was looking at $14.65. It's, I don't remember the amount it is right now, but it's, I think, $14.35. And then I went to 15, and then 15.50. And custodial subs, Mr. Collins and Mr. Howland have been asking me to get the amount increased. So I went to 15, and then 15.50. And as you're going to see, I'm doing 50 cents in between for an automatic increase. And that, so, and where I have to watch that is that we do have part-time custodial subs in the union. So I needed to make sure that my subs were not making more than it. So I made sure that I was within those guidelines. And then the clerical subs, again, they're at 12-something. I went $13.50. And then, right now, the clerical, the retired clerical subs receive $2 an hour more than the just clerical. So that would be anybody that is a retired clerical sub, a retired clerical person from Beverly Public Schools would make $2 more. So I stayed consistent on that. So I'm looking for approval to do, set the non-unit hourly rates as follows.
I would make that motion.
So moved.
Fantastic. Open for discussion. Do I see any hands? Yes, Mr. Manzo?
I just, I just want to say, so you, you know me. So I get a spreadsheet like this, I get the calculator out, and I figure out the percentages. I'm thinking, there's got to be a great story behind each of these because it's 2.4% or 3.3% or 5.6%. And sure enough, I was rewarded with a fantastic story from Jean as to why each of these rates had to increase by a certain amount. And it was a different story for every line.
Exactly.
So it was just fantastic.
Thank you. And as, and as you recall, Mr. Manzo, on our financial forecasting committee that we met with the city, this was one of the concerns they had when we were talking about it. And as you recall, the committee members, we recall, we did increase our teacher substitute rate up because we were to the point that they were not quite making minimum wage. So, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
So this will make sure that all of our, all of these positions are at least at minimum wage, and we won't be in that problematic situation any longer.
Right.
And I heard you say, we'll have to figure out where to find the money to pay the additional rate.
I mean, it's going to have to be based on the thing. So the way I look at it is that, you know, when we're building our budgets, we're going to at least know what our costs are going to be instead of each year when we do it. And when we negotiate with our units, we do a three-year. So like this year, we really don't know when we built our budget, but we're going to know next year and the following year. And the way I look at it, in the, you know, some of these areas, we can adjust what our costs are going to be by, based on how much, how many are we going to have? How many lunch monitors are we going to have?